Welcome to the Regular Committee on the Hall Meeting for Monday, May 8, 2017. I want to first recognize the opening of this meeting on additional territory of the NAMO First Nations. And our clerk tonight is Ms. Gurry. And we do have a scheduled recess if required at 6:00 p.m. So call the meeting to order. Interpreters will be late. Ms. Gurry.
Thank you, Your Worship. Related items this evening on the agenda, we have the delegation 12B, Mr. Peter Dernfer, for changing that delegation to be now Sherri Dernfer, Les Anderson, and Will Swarland. Agenda item 5B, Prior Station One, Condition Assessment and Manual Analysis, we're replacing the recommendation that was on the report to this recommendation as follows. The Council directs staff to include Scenario Three, Build Meteoratic System Location, in the 2018-2022 Financial Plan, which would include funding from the General Asset Management Reserve or the Strategic Infrastructure Reserve, or a combination of both. And that's it, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Counselor, your question.
Thank you. Just through yourself to Ms. Gurry, is this where we do a recent addition to the agenda?
Yes, yes.
I've been asked by, don't remember the last name, Dorothy, to be added to the agenda regarding parking.
It's less than.
Howton.
Dorothy Howton.
Parking.
Dorothy Howton.
Parking.
Delegation.
Under delegation, just to be added as a delegation. I guess I, thank you.
So that would, hasn't come under 12D? Am I correct?
Yes, Your Worship, if Council agrees to that in addition to the.
Okay. So, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as a amendment? Moved by Counselor Kev.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Paul. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the questions. In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So the next item is motion to adopt some amendments for the Regular Committee on the Hall Meeting for February 27. Moved by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor Kev. Thank you. Any errant submissions? Seeing none, call the questions. In favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The first item on the agendas 5A, which is the GIS Technology Plan, is to be introduced by Mr. Brad McPry, Chief Operations Officer. And the purpose is to provide Council with information about the city of NAMO GIS technology. Mr. Gurry.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council staff, and members of the public. Today, Council will receive a presentation on geographic information systems, or GIS, as it's more commonly referred to. Today, Mark Willoughby, who has been instrumental in moving GIS forward within the organization, will be joined by Paul Rosen and our consultant David Holdstock, providing an overview of what the city is with GIS and the potential roadmap moving forward. In moving forward with GIS, Council will be closer to achieving the Computerized Maintenance Management Program as identified within the Core Service Room.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Your Worship and members of the public. Thank you for this opportunity to provide some introductory remarks of our city of NAMO GIS Technology Plan. To begin, what is geographic information system, or GIS? A GIS provides a platform for the city to manage location-based information. GIS allows the city to store, query, analyze, location-based data for a wide variety of purposes. The city started using GIS in the 1990s. As will be seen, GIS is used by many operating groups across the city today. Among other things, GIS helps us manage our assets, our transportation network, and our environment. This in turn supports the city's commitment to sustainability, as identified in our corporate strategic plan. The city is developing the GIS Technology Plan in order to improve the delivery of GIS services by the city. The GIS Technology Plan is also under development in order to ensure that the city is fully prepared for the planned implementation of the Computerized Maintenance Management System. With that said, I would like to introduce to your worship and council, Mr. David Holdstock of the Geographic Technologies Group. The Geographic Technologies Group is the architect of the City of NAMO GIS Technology Plan. Mr. Holdstock will now take you through a presentation about GIS and our technology plan.
Does that work?
There you go.
Great. Your Worship, Counsel. Thank you very much for inviting me tonight. I have 30 minutes to talk to you about the GIS Technology Plan, explain what geographic information systems is, as it were, and update you on everything. So let me get started, in the interest of time, let me get started. I want to give you a quick overview, talk about GIS, talk about the technology plan, which is a little bit more than just a technology plan, and then we'll talk about the value of GIS and where we're going, you know, as a city, as it were. So the overview really is, even though we call it a GIS Technology Plan, it's more than that. The idea behind putting this plan together for the city was to build an enterprise, scalable, sustainable, and enduring GIS, something that will last, something that is sustainable and useful in the enterprise. Geographic Information Systems, my job here is very difficult because I want to explain to you what GIS is, and it takes a little longer than five minutes, but I'm going to do my best. Geographic Information Systems, you know, is all about, you know, mapping and database technology, you know, as you see at the top. It's about visualizing data, questioning, analyzing that information, and interpreting and understanding. In its essence, geographic information systems is no more than what you see on the screen. It's a coordinate, it's a digital point. And GIS is all about building a model for our community, for the city. And make a note here that, as an awful lot of money goes into building this model, but this model is based on one thing, digital points. If we combine the digital points, we end up with a digital line. If we combine the digital line, we end up with a polygon. No more, no less. And we can do an awful lot with that information. So if you leave tonight with the understanding GIS is all about building a digital model, but it's points, lines, and polygons, so it's no more, and then we build from there. As you can see from this graphic, a digital point can be a fire hydrant, you know, it can be a manhole cover, it can be a light, it can be a tree. Now, with that point, we can add attribute information, and it gets more sophisticated there. So the point can be those things. A line, as you see from the graphics, can be a fence, a road, sidewalk, path, stream. So that's, you can see we're building the mapping information now. And then with a polygon, you can see it could be a, you know, a pond, a subdivision, you know, a parcel of land, essentially, or even a subdivision there. Three things, points, lines, and polygons. Now, make a note, you know, we've got provincial data, we've got federal data, we've got national data, we've got private data, we've got local data, and there's millions of dollars gone into building all of this infrastructure. And essentially, that's what we end up with. Now, the point in question about this GIS Technology Plan is we're looking at, we're looking at how GIS can serve the city better, and that's what the GIS Technology Plan is about. So when you look at this graphic, I'm hoping it speaks volumes, those points, lines, and polygons really end up with digital data layers, and this is cartography, this is mapping, and that's what GIS is about. But it's more than that, it's about the relational database we attach for those features. And then it's allowing users to access that information, whether it's in the field or in the desktop, to make better, more informed decisions. And all of the departments in the city are using that model. And throughout North America, towns, cities, and counties are using geographic information to improve efficiency, increase productivity, reduce costs, and things like that. It's an incredible enterprise solution for any local government. It comes in different flavors. We have Internet solutions that really are departmental-wide, customized, tailored to departments with their information. There's Internet solutions, there's mobile technology, there's operational dashboard. GIS has moved into a world of big data, and we're now integrating maps with dashboarding technology. We also have story maps, which are simple, is a simple GIS to share with the public, to share information about water fronts and parks and land. And then we have dynamic integration, meaning anything can be linked to that. That's a browser, that's a classic browser where you can see the point is the tree and the tree are the attributes. Picture this, as you keep building that, you end up with a lot of information. Not only do you end up with information internally, you end up with information sharing to the public. Now the public can go online and look at information, or, you know, this $10 million worth of digital information you've created, you're now sharing with the public. We now have it in our back pocket. So, you know, walking around NAMO, I should be able to access any information that's made available to me, and even report information. So if I'm walking about the city and I see some graffiti, I should be able to take a photograph and send it into the city. It's all about crowdsourcing, it's all about enabling not only the departments, but also citizens. Then we have the dashboard, so we have an integrated map with a live dashboard, meaning when it comes to asset management, and we go back to the points, when we talk about assets, it's a digital point, but we've got information about that point. We have, you know, characteristics about that point, and then we can see it in real time. So if I go out and change a characteristic or replace an asset, this dashboard will change as well. This is real-time information now. So it's much more than maps, it's geographic information systems with a database and asset management tools. Then we have story maps, which essentially is all about photography, information linked to the map to share with the public. Then we have dynamic integration, meaning that any database that any department has that has a geography to it, we can map it. Why do we do that? Because we look for patterns. We look for patterns of information, and we can start asking these GIS different questions. When will our infrastructure fail? What's the age of our infrastructure? When should we replace our infrastructure? All about asset management, it's huge. And that's where the Computer Maintenance Management System comes in. I think, Council, Your Worship, there was a decision made that a Computer Maintenance Management System was really important for the operation of the city. Well, the engine that runs that is geographic information systems. It's the map and the database, and the algorithms that go into that to make decisions. So that was GIS as best I can do it in about seven minutes. So, you know, points, lines, and polygons, and all of that attribute information is really key to any local government who's using the technology. Now we look at the technology plan. I just want to give you an update on where we are with the technology plan. The technology plan, as I said, it's an enterprise plan, and it comes in three phases. The needs assessment, the system design, and then the strategic plan itself. And if we look at that, we look at the needs assessment, even before we came on site, we kind of created and offered up an online questionnaire to over 150 people, 150 staff, I should say, and asked them about GIS. And we had a kickoff meeting, and we have a lot of stakeholders and a lot of consensus building. So we didn't do this blind, we were really here listening to all of the departments saying, what are your needs? What do you want at geospatial technology? And geospatial technology, I talk about GIS, but it's AVL as well, it's Automated Vehicle Location, it's GPS, it's Global Positioning Systems, it's RFID tech, it's anything with geospatial in it. So GIS is kind of more, or the plan is more than just GIS. So the questionnaire results were interesting because we were able to develop a profile of what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats were, based on feedback from all of the staff. And we went through each department, and we identified, you can see, Bylaw Services Department, you know, routing or routing of vehicles, you know, and information in the field, Communications and Community Engagement Section, their needs, Community Development Department, their needs, IT, what their needs are, fiber management. The fiber management's interesting because even the IT, who usually supply all this GIS, need GIS to manage infrastructure. And then we have Fire Rescue Department, are looking at patterns of information. You know, if we have information about every fire that went on in the city, we can look at patterns. We can start looking at patterns, and once we identify patterns, we can start changing the way we operate. And I use the royal "we" inasmuch as the "we" as a city here. The Parks and Recreation Department, same principle, lots of uses. Engineering and Public Works, lots of GIS uses. Finance, HR even uses GIS, and the Chief Sustainability Officer, there's lots of uses to GIS. The point in question is the fact that there's an opportunity to grow this GIS responsibly to offer all of the departments more significance when it comes to the use of geospatial sciences. So that was the needs. We now have comprehensively documented the needs of all the departments. Needs in relation to governance, data and databases, procedures and workflow, training, education, and knowledge transfer, and that's why I'm going to talk about system design, because once we've documented the need, we can look at the system design as well. And essentially, we're looking at what should be in the cloud, what should be on desktop, what's premise-based, how people should access it, what tools they should use, and essentially, that's essentially what we're looking at. Now, when we get to the roadmap, we have to answer the questions I've just brought up, and that is essentially these questions. If there are, you know, you've heard of the three legs, but there are maybe six legs of a GIS, and those legs are essentially governance. If the GIS isn't managed properly and there isn't a governance model, it's just not going to work, okay? If the digital data is inaccurate and unreliable, the GIS is not going to work. If we're not integrating GIS with these disparate systems, again, the GIS is going to be weak at best. If we use the wrong software, or we have too many software solutions, again, there's going to be confusion. Infrastructure, you can guess by now, if the infrastructure's not right, we really shouldn't embark on the GIS, but the infrastructure is right. And then, no point in doing this GIS if we don't have an ongoing GIS training, education, and knowledge transfer plan. It's not just training, it's not just education, it's knowledge transfer. So it has to be, this plan talks about these six components and how vital they are to the success of the city, okay? That's a benchmark of where the city is, if you can get a grasp of that. Those six components I've talked about, from left to right, governance, data and databases, procedures, then at the bottom, software, training, and infrastructure. If we had to grade the city, not that we're really grading it or benchmark the city, that's, if you look at governance, we do have some weaknesses there. We've got to improve the governance. The digital data is in a great place and getting better. We're not integrating enough, the software we need to use more and more effectively. The middle one in, talking about training, education, and knowledge transfer, hugely weak. Our job, but the infrastructure's good. There's some irony here. If you look at training and education and governance, there's two weak ones there. All we were charged with doing is identifying the strengths, and there's a lot of successes. Don't look at this blind inasmuch as, oh, well, you know, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. There is a lot of work, but our job was to objectively look at the city and critique the city. We ended up creating a vision statement and goals and objectives, and then, these columns are the columns you've just seen, from governance all the way to infrastructure. And then we rated the governance based on the bar chart. Those, if you look on the Y-axis, that's really one out of 10, let's call it a rating one out of 10. On the X-axis is 30 variables that dictate whether an organization is governing GIS properly. That gets like a heartbeat, really, I suppose. That gives you an idea of where the strengths and weaknesses are, and you can see there are weaknesses. Now, those weaknesses are transferred into these action items on the left side, so that goes there. Then you look at data and databases, we're in a good place there. Then we look at procedures and workflow, some gaps we've got to fill. Then we look at software, some great stuff going on, but some gaps to fill. And the same can with GIS training and education. Well, I'll stop there. You can see, if we're not training and educating the staff and have some tools for knowledge transfer, user group meetings and things like that, then GIS is always going to be underutilized. And then we have infrastructure, which isn't all bad. What I've tried to do here is demonstrate to you graphically where the city is, because if we don't know where we are now, we can't monitor where we go. So now we have a benchmark, and we can start saying, well, if we do all these things, these graphs are going to look very different. And if we change these graphs, then we need to win awards. You know, my goal is to develop an IT strategic plan, I should say, a GIS strategic plan that will allow the city to win geospatial awards, no doubt. Now, I've talked about GIS as best I can, I've talked about the strategic plan. You know, why should we do all of this if there isn't a value proposition? Well, this is a cover of a copy, a publication I had not so long ago, which talks about the return on investment. But when we're talking about GIS, I promise you that it's going to improve efficiency, it will increase productivity, it will save time, it will save money, it will make better quality decisions, improve data accuracy, automate workflow procedures, save lives, improve information processing, complying with mandates, protect your community, improve communication, provide data to anybody, any interested parties, respond quicker to citizen requests, improve citizen access to data, and effectively manage our resources. I know I'm throwing those out a bit like confetti, okay? But if I go past this, then I can truthfully say, this project revealed to us that if this plan is followed, what we're going to see here in the city is improved information retrieval, okay? There will be real-time dynamic databases, there won't be stuck somewhere. There will be innovative thinking and better decision-making. There will be accurate and reliable record-keeping, and we're going to replace old record-keeping, you know, and those errors associated with that. New real-time dashboard analytics and big data. There's going to be automated and advanced field inspections and collection, there're going to be streamlined processes from office to field, field to office, there's going to improve navigation and locational awareness. Every, when I walk out of this building, I know where I am, all staff should know where they are. GPS is really in our back pocket now. Patterns and predictive analysis and proactive management, they were the things that really came out. If we map all the infrastructure in the city and we know the characteristics of the infrastructure, we can now predict when it will fail, when we need to replace it, and we will predict where things are happening, and we will make better decisions. So there is a compelling value proposition for GIS. Concluding remarks, as I move through this fairly quickly, is the fact that any organization needs a master plan, and you have one now, and I think it's been well received. And it hasn't been written in isolation, it has been written with a whole lot of consensus building and a whole lot of listening. So we now have a master plan that essentially has developed a roadmap, it is a roadmap for the future. We also have a governance model that is documented. We have options for showing quick success. If we don't, if the city doesn't come to you, Council, with success stories, it's not going to get funded, simple as that. If we don't have an education plan and we don't have ease of use, that GIS is simple to use, it's not going to work. And then if we, it's not enterprise in nature, it's not going to work, and therefore, we also need to quantify the benefits and costs. There's a really just seven, it's a philosophy of GIS, but essentially, that was it. So what I've tried to do today was introduce GIS, talk about the GIS Technology Plan, and then really try and put it in perspective as to the value of GIS.
Okay, thank you very much, David. And just before we open it up for questions, just a couple of key points I wanted to make. First one is that GIS is just, it's all about information, it's about sharing it, making it accessible to those decision-makers so they can make well-informed decisions in an efficient manner. So that's point number one. Point number two, the city's been endeavoring in GIS for decades now, and we've got a lot of good successes, and we've got a solid foundation to build on it going forward. And third point is that the GIS Technology Plan, it's in production right now. We anticipate that we'll be able to make that available to Council within about a month or two for their consideration. There'll be a number of recommendations in there, and, you know, if we act on those recommendations, it'll pave the way for us to adopt something like a Computerized Maintenance Management System and other, you know, valuable initiatives that we could be undertaking. So just open it up to questions if there are any.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. I appreciate the passion and the expertise, it sounds very exciting to me. It's all about information, information sharing, and what I like is that this would be of benefit not only to staff, but also, in many cases, for the general public to access information about the city. My question is related to one of the areas that you indicated was a weakness right now or potentially, and that was training and education. And to me, that's something that would have to be ongoing, it's not a one-time thing. Things are always changing, we're always upgrading. So how would the training and education component be handled on an ongoing basis? Do you have any comments on that?
Well, it's interesting you should say that, because I said, that fact goes hand-in-hand with the governance model. I think maybe out of the plan, I know the plan's not finished yet, but I think one of the recommendations is to improve the existing governance model. And with that will come a more, and you're exactly right, this is not a one-time thing with regards to training, education, and knowledge transfer. But governance is so important to managing and maintaining training, education, and knowledge transfer plan. Now, knowledge, training, and education comes in different ways, formal training, online training, informal training, round-back lunches type of thing, GIS user group. The governance model will dictate the success of the training, education, and knowledge transfer. So we're going to get that piece right. Once that piece is right, then the training and education will form into place. In the documentation, we've laid out what that would look like. It's an interesting, I got a consultation with a client in the U.S. who said, we have now just ratified a Geographic Information Officer in our organization, which is a recommendation I made, and we hope that the training and education will fall into place once that Geographic Information Officer gets there. So those two pieces go hand-in-hand. I'm not sure I answered your question completely, but does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Counselor Kev.
Well, thank you very much, David, Mark, and Paul, thank you. I heard a couple of terms interesting to me, and the benchmark being the character showed very departmentalized within the organization, that was the one that showed governance and everything. So it was very much departmentalized previously, that's what I see, not sharing. And so, but I heard it was built by consensus, this plan. So 150 staff have talked about it. So the collaboration with staff, but this is to serve the public too. So what are we going to do to make this? Like, how do we collaborate with the public to see what Jim, Bill, Jerry, and I can get off of it?
It's a great question. It's a, well, no, it's really, if you don't understand, it's incredibly clever to see that from that presentation, because, because yes, yes, and yes, all of that. And we can ride on fumes when it comes to presuming what the general public wants, but there is discussion at the moment that maybe we should be addressing head-on what the public wants with GIS. I can cite, and can we give you a presentation on what the rest of the world are doing with sharing information and engaging citizen engagement and crowdsourcing, but it would be very useful to engage the public and find out what they would like out of the city's geographic information core, because that's what it would be. How much information do they want to see, and what flavor do they want? So, yes, we haven't done that yet, but there is discussion.
So I'll just expand on that. So the public consultation piece is something that we had anticipated and we had talked about in terms of a scope of work with the GIS Technology Plan assignment. So right now, we have it sitting as an optional piece of work that we haven't engaged yet. We wanted to see how things went before we went down that road. So if we think it's important, it's something that we can start as soon as we think it's important to start that.
I'd follow up, just from my perspective, to use it to get information for building inspection, what are perimeter requirements are, plans, all of those things. Some people use it as a business model. Excellent, from my view, the people I know, the building community, they have worked with our staff, and that's been a great collaboration. But the average person trying to find out where the pipes are in their neighborhood, where the drainage is going, what they're doing, what they should do when they apply for things, I think that's hugely important. And as these systems become more dynamic and they switch platforms all the time, like you say, number one, it becomes confusing for you. I love the old NAMO map, I loved it, but now I can't get to it. I have new maps, and I didn't like the changes, and I hate my work updates things for me anyhow, right? So I understand it. So from that perspective. So from that perspective, it lends to our infrastructure, the cloud is now everything. Dropbox, things now way quicker than email, way quicker than anything else. So are we going to teach, or when we say education, just educate staff? Or we're going to have education for our public on how to use our system too? And the infrastructure, the cloud is important. And we're way up there in infrastructure because we did start in 1993, building infrastructure. So are we needing more infrastructure that will look like there? But how does it keep current and how do people just look at cloud? Is that safe? I'm still where I'm at, hippie from the seventies, right? I'm worried about my stuff, what my stuff's going. Is it safe, our cloud system? Because I don't think our system was very good before, and that's where the governance thing comes in. Let's question more staff.
Good, excellent, thank you. I'm enjoying this question. The technology, GIS technology is remarkable to that. It wasn't four years ago, but it's remarkable. When we talk about educating the public, it should be intuitive, just like Google, and it is. So the tools and techniques are intuitive and available, but I'll add another comment on the security.
So our security is not something that I'm a subject matter expert in, maybe she has.
Just looking at that. Some more follow-up, does this go to the finance audit committee?
So we're anticipating that bringing, we're bringing a copy of the technology plan for council's consideration, and we'll probably have some recommendations that we'll forward from there, so one step at a time, I think.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Berman. I just wanted to address one aspect, which is the public engagement and the public's use of the technology. And the study that the gentlemen have followed was, first of all, get our house in order, know where we are as an organization before we open this house for people to come in and view. So these are kind of like two phases that kind of like overlap. And we are doing more in phase one of building the model and making sure that we are trained, there's procedures for updating information, collecting information. And then the next phase would overlap into that engagement piece to find out. And Mr. McCray will speak more on that.
Your worship, just to follow up on Mr. Holmes' comments, that's the importance of the governance model is once that governance model is figured out and we're able to strengthen that model, we're able to now figure out how we're going to move this to the second phase of the public consultation piece, the data transfer piece, the education, bringing the public up the speed of what we have. And in order for us to get that moving forward first, we need to figure out where GIS lies.
Mrs. Curry.
Oh, yes, your worship, just to bring to Counselor Kip. The city has, the city's own cloud, which is protected. The data is secured in our location. But as for the cloud, personal information, we're not allowed to store in the cloud unless it can be guaranteed that the storage is inside of Canada because of our Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act, it's unique to BC. And personal information is not allowed to be stored outside of Canada.
Thank you. Counselor Holm.
Um, thank you. Great presentation. I think GIS is probably, you know, this fundamental foundation for, you know, this digital world that we live in now. So I'm really happy, I'm excited to see the potential that it can do with GIS and GPS. I think one of the key things that we need to look at is if we have a system that BC Transit can log on to, track where our buses are, because that's the biggest complaint that we get from our youth and everybody else waiting for a bus, whether the bus just passed them to be 10 or 15 minutes late, and we can't track buses right now, I don't know why. I can track my dog, I can track my kid, this collar, but I have them tagged to my phone, but I can't track where the damn bus is. It blows my mind that we can't do that right now. So I'm hoping that this, having a map, a GIS map of everything and an overlay that we can supply to Transit or RDN to get stuff done for Transit would be great. Other, you know, features I could see for the public is snow removal. Like this year, the amount of calls that we had, when are you going to come pile my road, where is it? You know, if we had GPS tracking with the GIS, we can tell you, this is the primary route. You know, if you click on where you are, and it will give you a timeline or a date or an hour, or wherever, however technical we want to be, to see when the truck's going to be there. So you know that if you're going to be stuck in your house for 24 hours or 48 hours, you'll know when the pile was going to come. So I think the information that GIS plays in the grander scheme of things is great. It's great for tourism, like the links of the pictures, the story time, somebody comes and takes a picture, posts it on there. If anybody drives by, it pops up as an information piece, that's great. Tourism has this fast-paced introduction of the amazing things that the city and my house offer. The question I ask, how many staff do we have right now specifically working, like, in the GIS department?
Through your work, we have four in the engineering GIS section. We have one staff member in the development department. And then we have a number of staff members in the IT group that help keep the IT infrastructure for GIS available for staff and public.
Okay, and so my question with that is I know that the RDN has four, and they're doing trails, right? They're mapping all the trails, if I'm mistaken, but we discussed that there, and you just have to more, hire some more staff to do that. So are we, we hope to overlay our GIS system with the RDNs to complete more information like that? Are we all working in separate silos, is I guess the question that I have with other cities?
Your worship, you're correct, your observation that we are working in silos, currently we are. The technology will afford us an opportunity to, or in the way of data exchange and sharing with some of the other stakeholders that would be interested in that information.
Thank you.
Counselor Bassett.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Counselor Holm, trying to pick my pocket, there were a couple of those comments and questions. But I'm gathering that the system is only as good as the data that is entered into it. And would this system allow us, say, on anything like tonight, and we're discussing booking at a swimming pool, a room, a field, a sheet of ice? That information gives me place where I could go tonight and say, hey, birthday party next Saturday. Rent a room, rent a gym, rent the field, rent the pool for an hour. Is that the kind of, what you could say, real time? Is that the real-time stuff that could be entered in that I could go in and find out if stuff is available, like renting a car? I can go in and find out if I can rent a car in North Carolina or New Jersey tonight, right now?
Yeah, you mean the same principle of city information?
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly, good analogy, that's exactly what we're talking about. Real-time information, we're talking about ABL, there's no reason we shouldn't see every city vehicle when we want to see it on the screen. There's no reason why council shouldn't be seeing digital information on the screen at meetings like this when you're looking at parcel information, you're looking at zoning, you're looking at patterns of incidents, you're looking at vehicles in real time. For that matter, if we wanted to track the whereabouts of every council member, we could have it up there tonight if you all have cell phones.
That's all right, I got that.
So that's my point, that to go through this one, yes and yes. That's where we're going with this technology plan, is real-time information, not data that has been stored for two months and then we accessed it. The whole thing is a central repository. The central repository, all the departments are hitting. Now, what we mustn't do is centralize the GIS expertise and have a centralized model. We want a hybrid of a decentralized and a centralized model, meaning that all the departments are trained and use GIS, and they're subject matter experts, and we have a core group of experts who enable the entire organization, and that hits to the governance. But to your point, yes, if I understand your question, that's right, it's exactly what we're trying to get to.
Thank you, swan follow-up. And the list of departments that you identified, public works and engineering was one of them. To Counselor Holm's point, your question, did that include transportation? Was transportation, buses, bus service, handy gear, all that, so they were?
Yeah, they should all be addressed in the strategic plan, yes. So ABL, what had been talked about, and all of the requirements you mentioned, should be talked about in the technology plan.
Thank you.
They don't, Counselor, I can ask her, the list, point for her. I think.
So my question was, did we speak then to the RDN transportation department through public, our public works and engineering?
I don't know, we'll have to check on that, that's a good question.
That's right, thank you.
If not, we will, show all of that.
I'll see you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your support. What I'm hoping for, I'm probably guilty, I haven't surfed around completely on everything, all that stuff, but we're here for like infrastructure and we're all about simplicity, like, quick and simple. And we get asked, or I wonder about like, for example, it seems to be really not sexy or vulgar, but pipes and infrastructure, so I'm looking at the city map, I'm sorry guys, and if you're honest, when you look both over the map and see piping, then he's redone in timeframes, because we're deciding how much money we're going to spend on infrastructure and that type of stuff, so it's probably there, probably in the bad way here, but nonetheless, click on there and say, pipes here are due in this many years from now, so we start planning around that, or, and, so that's one thing about that type of stuff, water and sewer pipes. But another thing also, when there's a lot of development happening over the years, and the DCC, developers pay, and we're talking about potential green space, which is great. And this whole, we're clicking where there's potential green space, because if we're right out of the space, that's one there where like, we just need to click on there and say, potential for A or C mark, or what could happen next, but, and we're always bursting at the seams in the same. I'm over the math, so I touched on two topics, subjects. My third subject would be where there is potential for us, and what would be allowed and not allowed, like the simple for people out there, simple for myself, those same things.
Does that make sense? Absolutely makes sense. The first question, when we were working for another organization, we thought, want a capital improvement project, which is, really, we should have every pipe in the system with every age, and every condition, it should all be in there, and that's where your investment in the capital, the computer management system is important. Asset management is everything to the GIS. So if we have that in there, then you can start saying, well, when will I need to replace it? Well, it was installed 50 years ago, it's coming up for replacement. That's exactly what the GIS is about. And then you can run some models and say, well, our capital budget has to be this in 2020 because we expect failure here, exactly that. The open space scenario, that's what the GIS is about, is seeing in real time available land, parcel land, who owns the land, and looking at different scenarios for growth. Especially when it comes to kind of parks and recreation, and the, you know, the greenways, and connecting the greenways and buying land, that's what it is. This is real-time decision-making, it's not printed maps like this, even though this is nice. It's on your iPhone, on your iPad, and available to council. One of my recommendations in the plan is that when you ask a question about geography, we pull it up on the screen and you look at it in real time, you know, so it's much more of a dynamic conversation. What was the third one?
Oh, third one was, I think we touched on the potential, what's available for development, but you answered it.
Yeah, I see, yeah, you really should be able to, even for the public, they should go in and say, well, what's this parcel zone, you know, what's the land use information, you know? And anything specific to that parcel or that subdivision should be available to the public, so.
Yeah.
And you. And it comes back to that question about, it's not difficult to do that. I talked about the whole suite of products. Those products should be designed internally and built with the existing, you own this software already, by the way. I'm not, we haven't talked about any software you don't own. We just are saying it's massively underutilized. That comes to the governance model, and it comes to training and education and knowledge transfer. So if you've got two weaknesses there, where you're spending a lot of money on software, we've got to fix it type of thing. But to your point, all three are valid.
So just to wrap up quickly, so I'm reading GSI, right, I hope you use that word, yeah. Those same subjects, and when you say governance, you're referring to like governance has utilized separately, governance I hear.
But what I mean by governance is, how is the GIS managed within the city? Meaning, and this is important, who is ultimately responsible to GIS? Who is that person ultimately responsible to? A steering committee, that's usually made up of the directors. And then that person has a group of GIS specialists who enable the entire city.
No, I'm clear, I'm crystal clear, thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you. The first one is to staff, where are we standing with the, well, we're willing to talk about GIS, but where are we standing on the use of portable devices and our current mapping? That was a project that's been on the books for some time. In other words, you can't use our current mapping on an Apple device very well. We've promised that it's right around the corner, next project.
So, your worship, plans are underway to improve the access of that information, and we like to refer it as being device act plastic, so that your Apple device or your BlackBerry or your Samsung phone or whatever it is, you're able to access those facilities through any electronic device. So there are plans underway to remedy that situation you've outlined.
Any ETA?
I'm sorry, your worship, I don't have an ETA right now, but as we move forward, what we plan, that issue will certainly come to the top, and we will be addressing it.
The next one is layers. We talked about getting down to the, down to the earth, if you will, or down to the ground. But one of the things that strikes me is that when we're doing a fish community plan, or case owning, and we saw examples of it down in the, in Harwood, where pieces of property were considered to be for use, because everybody thought it would be a great place to have a corridor development where you have residential, atall, retail. The only problem was that a foot below the surface is bedrock. And you put a significant, and everybody thought it was a great idea to consider that. You're probably going to want to put underground parking there to cover the residents that are up top, so they don't interfere with the surface parking for the commercial. Problem is that a foot below the surface, and we've got a lot of it in the night hole, you've got bedrock. So that becomes a very impractical, impractical development there. Even though everybody thought on a single-dimensional map, it looked like a great idea at the time. Do we go any further than the surface? My question.
So, your worship, one of the departments came forward and indicated that we needed to do a better job of mapping ground conditions across the city. Obviously, if we're burrowing through rock to install pipes, that's going to impact construction costs. So the suggestion was brought forward that we do some work to improve how we collect that information and make it available to staff and others that need to see it.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Kip?
No, I just make a motion to proceed. Moved by Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Bassett, all those in favor.
Motion, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. McCray.
Yeah, the next segment is under 5B. Fire Station 1, Condition Assessment and Renewal Analysis.
So, your worship. Chief Craig Richardson and Deputy Fire Chief Karen Frye, along with the consultants, are here to provide their findings to the condition assessment completed on Fire Station 1. The consultants report, along with staff's recommendation, have identified option 3 as a preferred option for. Chief Richardson and the consultants will review the assessment provided, and we'll be ready to respond to any questions posed by councilmen.
Counselor Holm.
Yeah, I think I'm probably in conflict because one of the options involves the community service building, which is, I don't know.
Director, the council reports. Chief.
Thank you. Good afternoon, your worship and council. Thank you for having us here to make this presentation tonight. I'm just going to provide a little bit of context and some background before turning the floor over to our consultants. As council will recall, Fire Station 1 had a number of asset management projects on the budget for several years. And the crux of the report that you're going to hear tonight is a result of your direction for us to do a comprehensive study on the building prior to, told I need to stand closer, prior to undertaking some of those expensive asset management projects. So we consulted HCMA Architecture and Design to come and work with us and work through that process. to come and work with us and, and work through that process. Of note, their, their process involved engagement with multiple divisions within the city, uh, firefighters' union was engaged, as well as fire staff, uh, and they combined that together with technical analysis of the current building and, uh, examination of some different scenarios. The recommendation, as Ms. Gury pointed out, is to, uh, staff is recommending that we proceed with option number three, which is rebuilding the fire station in its current location, and the architect will provide the, uh, the background and the, and the supporting information for, for that recommendation. So with that said, I'll turn the floor over to Stuart Rothney from H C M A Architecture and Design, and then, uh, the consultant and staff will be available to take questions at the end.
Thank you, Craig, um, your worship and council, thank you for the opportunity, uh, we're here simply to guide you, um, through the overview of the report that you have issued to you, uh, the intention here is just to give you a sense of the various options and the process that we went through, and to give you, um, some understanding in terms of the high-level overview of the project. But I'd like to start by just reemphasizing and reflecting on the role that our fire services perform in our communities. Emergency services personnel are really society's truest public servants, and it's critical to the health, safety, and resilience of our community, I don't think anybody would argue with that, it's certainly something that, in looking at the needs of any healthy, vibrant community, the ability for our fire services to respond effectively is just a given, and in fact, as we reflect on what that means for this community in Nanaimo, it's even more critical, and the role that Fire Hall, Fire Station Number One performs in that is critical. So, to emphasize that the original study was generated by, um, a change the council had identified last year, some funds for upgrades had been identified and approved under the budget, tho- those costs have been delayed into 2017, and gave us an opportunity to reevaluate the best use of that money. So prior to spending these funds, council has directed us to look at options for the renewal and refurbishment, options for Fire Hall, Fire Station Number One, and test if they have better value for money in the longer term. So what did we discover? Uh, the original hall, um, Fire Station was constructed in nineteen sixty-six, um, and over the early life of that building, it actually operated as the only fire station in the city of Nanaimo, and then as the community grew, and there were amalgamation of the number of the neighboring communities, uh, the number of fire halls has expanded, as you know, and is currently four-serving this community, um, there was then a moment, in nineteen ninety-eight, when the B C building code was significantly upgraded in relation to seismic code, and at that time, the city performed, um, a renovation of the existing hall in two thousand to bring it up to the standards required at that time. The existing building has definitely some challenges with it, the boiler system is still the original boiler system, it's over fifty years old and is literally on its last legs, uh, the electrical systems are challenged, uh, they have reached the end of their life, they're also at the end of their capacity, which means there's no ability to expand the system or add to it, both those things have less led to outages, both in terms of heat and power in this building, which obviously have a significant impact on operation. There are things contained in that building relative to the quality of the finishes, the roofing is leaking, uh, there's definitely some work that needs to be done in order to improve it, the superstructure, the image on your right is of the hose tower, some of the original concrete structure is degrading to the point where rebar is visible on the surface, um, the current ventilation systems within the building don't meet current code, there's literally a patchwork of add-ons that have occurred over the years, and allows the facility to limp along, but it is significantly out of date. There, believe it or not, in the fire hall, there is no fire alarm system, ironically, there's no sprinkler system in the building, and some of the current exiting doesn't meet current code. There are obviously no elevators within the building, um, the thing to recognize is the building contains other uses apart from the fire services, it contains the dispatch center, it contains, uh, the emergency coordination center for the city as well, as some, uh, the radio infrastructure, and therefore the ability to have, um, any member of the public that is involved with emergency response being able to go to the second floor to dispatch, and the E C C is a critical component, therefore an elevator is a very desirable thing in this public building, they don't have it right now. There are no current handicapped accessible washrooms within the building. We then asked our structural engineering firm, Harold Engineering, to evaluate the current building, I'm going to run a short video, this, um, is Sean Harold and Lee Rowley from Harold Engineering discussing the primary issues around the structural capacity of the building, and I'll just let the video run for a second.
Uh, today I'd like to just briefly discuss, um, the seismic upgrade that took place in nineteen ninety-nine, that our firm, uh, provided the structural engineering services for that upgrade.
Since the nineteen ninety-eight code, we had two major events, uh, the two thousand and ten Chile earthquake and the, uh, two thousand and eleven Japanese earthquake, and that really, uh, gave, uh, seismologists a greater understanding, uh, of how these large earthquakes behave, um, the duration of the, both earthquakes is in the order of three minutes, and obviously there was a lot of energy released, and what they did was, they took that knowledge and that, and the, uh, and the information gained from those earthquakes and, and basically transposed it to, uh, to, to, to B C, uh, and hence, in the National Building Code of two thousand and fifteen, there's been some significant changes, uh, that, uh, have increased the, uh, the seismic forces or seismicity of the Vankuran region to, to actually reflect that, uh, new information. The, uh, the performance of the building, uh, of its day was intended to be post-disaster, I would probably, uh, assume that the building would perform in a, uh, more akin to a normal occupancy building, i.e. about the building could suffer, uh, damage, but you'd be able to leave the building, uh, we'd have to do some analysis on that to kind of confirm that, but that's where it would be now, uh, so it would be life safety, um, but in terms of the use of the, uh, building as a post-disaster structure, then you probably, uh, you probably wouldn't want the, uh, you probably wouldn't want the amount of damage that it could sustain to enable it to operate as a, as a functioning fire hall. Well, the investment before wasn't, uh, misspent, we've enhanced the, uh, enhanced the, uh, performance of the building, and, uh, and, uh, ideally, the building now would perform, uh, as a, as a, and provide life safety, uh, levels of performance, so the people in the building will remain safe, and, and they'll be able to exit, um, in terms of, uh, post-disaster, though, uh, performance, it, it won't meet that requirement, and so, um, and so unfortunately, with the new code, more investment needs to be made to actually elevate it to the, the, uh, the standard that's required of, of today.
Yeah, I mean, as a citizen of, uh, of Nanaimo, with the new code coming into effect, I think we can expect an increase roughly around thirty-eight percent from the past code, this is a post-disaster building, this thing has to stay operational, because lives depend on it, so, um, you know, I hope we make the right decision, and, and, and my, my gut, my heart tells me that, you know, something certainly needs to be done, whether it's a seismic upgrade or it's a new build, um, you know, we can't take these things lightly, this is a very important building.
So I'd just like to show you a graph, which just puts that in context a little bit more for you, so in nineteen ninety-eight, this graph indicates the level of seismic capacity required in buildings in B C, uh, that was changed in two thousand and six by an upgrade to the B C building code, um, it's been further upgraded in two thousand and twelve, and in two thousand and seventeen, we're anticipating an, an increase again, you can see that the range of increase has gone up considerably over time, simply by the lessons learned from other events that have occurred around the world, and therefore, the seismic knowledge and how buildings respond in a seismic situation changes. If I then overlay that with the current facility, that line represents the seismic capacity of the current building, you'll see on the left of the chart, back in, um, before nineteen ninety-eight, the original building was below capacity, and then in two thousand, money was spent to upgrade it to that nineteen ninety-eight level, but it's remained at that level ever since, and as a result, it is currently forty-three percent deficient in capacity, that is seismic capacity. The other thing to recognize is the amount of space that you need to operate this building, so currently, um, the gray area is the amount of floor area of the fire station, and the red area is the administration and prevention, which is in the other building down the street. If I look at those current areas, there's approximately thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty square feet in the station, and six thousand four hundred and fifty square feet in the, uh, administration prevention. We sat down and we carefully looked at that, because we believe that there is some overcapacity in the area required to operate that building today, and it's simply born out of the fact, you may remember, I referenced the fact that new fire halls have come into the community, so the size of the original hall is now not required to meet the same demand as it was in some of its earlier days, so we can actually reduce the amount of area required, and you can see that it, it really only requires about eleven thousand three hundred square feet to operate fire operations, and about three thousand two hundred and fifty for administration and prevention, but the key thing is, the dotted line represents the amount of area in the existing fire station, that the simple graph tells us that we cannot accommodate both uses in the existing building and still operate effectively. We did spend some time looking at other alternative locations within the city, it was part of our mandate, but it became apparent very quickly, that in order to meet the standard operational requirement for a six-minute response time, that the central fire station location was optimal, you can see the location there relative to the area that that, that station actually covers in a six-minute response time. We recognized that over time, there may be an increase in the downtown core area of Nanaimo, that would instinctively increase the number of calls occurring, um, in, in the downtown area, however, in order to effectively cover all of the balance of the, of the response time, we still feel that maintaining the location in its current area is the critical decision, and therefore we're recommending that it stays where it is. So we looked at some scenarios, and quickly going to run you through these, the general assumptions were that, uh, the current dispatch and the emergency coordination center that's in the building will have to, um, be moved as a part of the renovation, but we don't want to do that twice, it's an expensive undertaking, not to mention a complex undertaking, and we can't take, uh, those facilities offline, they have to continue to operate, so there's some complexity, we only want to do it once. The costs for temporary facilities are included in these scenarios, so where a scenario requires us to remove the existing fire station, we still need to operate the fire station, and we've allowed for those temporary relocation costs. The scenarios include a consolidation of operations and administration and prevention, they're currently in two separate buildings, and the existing location and orientation of the fire station is considered optimal for the response times, that I was showing you on that, on that last one. And we've also looked at costs on a lifecycle basis, it's important to understand the longer-term costs, not just the short-term capital investment required, and the costs are analyzed over a forty-five-year timeline, to give us a really a long-term reflective, uh, lifecycle costs that take, take into account the long-term maintenance and operation of these buildings. It's true to say that the main, ongoing maintenance costs for newly constructed buildings are lower than that of renovated, renovated buildings, and we've allowed for a scheduled replacement of the building elements at the end of their expected life, so over a forty-five year period, certain elements of the building will need to be replaced. We had assumed escalation of about four percent in Adam, and the lifecycle costs are presented as future values, in other words, we've taken account of the ongoing costs, so the final numbers you will see over a forty-five year period, uh, reflect those future values. So the first consideration was status quo, what if we do nothing? We simply go on and patch and repair the existing facility, so we looked at that as a status quo option, um, it was our assumption, though, that eventually that building will have to be replaced, we can move it along over the next few years, but in ten years, our assumption is we'd have to rebuild it anyway. Then we have three other scenarios, scenario one is to expand and renovate the existing, the second one is to build new on the adjacent site, and the third scenario is to build new on the existing location, I'm going to walk you through those options. So the status quo, here's the current site configuration, uh, the fire operations building fronts onto Milton Street and Fitzwilliam, on the corner site there at six 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 Fitzwilliam, behind it, um, on Prado Street is the community services building, which is currently occupied by tenants, and the seven to ten club operate out of that building, and then the fire operations building is on Prado Street at five eighty Fitzwilliam, currently holding administration and prevention. So under this scenario, if we simply proceed with the essential repairs to the building, there'll be obviously a low capital cost investment upfront, uh, the other systems will be fixed once they fail, uh, the building will be replaced in ten years, we put a timeline around twenty twenty-eight, uh, the most significant impact of this option is that it carries a very high risk that operations will be directly impacted, and as a result, if it's a seismic event, or there's an electrical power failure, the implications are obvious. The risk of mechanical or electrical system failure, um, is significant until the day you replace it, and the administration operations will be continued to be separated, and therefore we're not gaining the operational efficiencies by cojoining those together. The initial capital cost for this option will be about one point one million in order to do the repair work, if we replace the facility in twenty twenty-eight, you're looking at a replacement cost of about twen- just over twenty-three million, and over the lifecycle of forty-five years, this option would cost the municipality forty-six and a half million. Now I'd like you to see those factors in comparison with the other scenarios, so scenario one, um, is to expand and renovate the existing facility, so the first thing we have to do is, we have to demolish a portion of that building in order to build a new addition. The reason we're doing that is to accommodate the essential emergency services, dispatch, and the emergent, uh, the coordination center, we can put that into a seismically up-to-date portion of that building, which is where they should be located, so that allows us to move those facilities over and create enough space for fire operations and for prevention and administration. The next step then in the process would be to renovate the existing hall, and we would have to bring that up to current code and spend some money, during that time, we'd have to relocate fire operations, uh, the consideration would be to accommodate temporary uses into the administration building and build a temporary, um, enclosure for the vehicles, those costs are included in these numbers I'm showing you. Ultimately, when the new and renovated building is complete, fire administration will move in there, that then frees up the C B C building for other repurposing. So in conclusion, the construction has to be phased in order to maintain operations, uh, we're ensuring a single move for the E E C and the dispatch, the administration and operations are consolidated, a temporary facility will be required, and ultimately the C B C building can be repurposed at the end. So you're now looking at an initial capital cost of about seventeen million dollars, um, that covers off all of the individual phasing that I was describing, and includes the and includes the temporary cost as well. And then over the life of this particular scenario, the cost is about forty-one million. We did look at a scenario to build a brand-new facility on an adjacent site. The reason we did that is because we can maintain the existing hall and not affect daily operations for fire operations. So we should look at it. But it does assume that we can demolish the CBC, C S B building. That obviously requires the relocation of tenants and the vacation of that building. We're aware of that, but we wanted to present this to council as a as an option. Once that building is vacated, it's demolished, and the site becomes available for a brand-new fire station. It's not located on Milton. It would be located on the corner of Prado and Fitzwilliam, which is not as desirable in terms of traffic movement on and off the site as the corner site on Milton, but could be managed with some traffic management implications, traffic lights, that type of infrastructure. Ultimately, then, the corner site, the hall, the original hall will be demolished. And council has the option then to look at repurposing and reusing the two adjacent sites. In conclusion, this option looks at an initial capital cost of fifteen, just over fifteen and a half million. This is less than the previous version. There's a reason for that because the renovation of the old building is costly. And ultimately, it's more complex than simply building a new facility from scratch. So the capital cost is slightly less here. You can also see that the life cycle cost is considerably lower over forty-five years, thirty-seven point eight million for the simple reason you've got a brand-new building with a brand-new start, which maintenance and operational terms is far more efficient. We have not, and I want to be clear to council, that we have not allowed for the sale of these other properties to offset any of these costs. That is a consideration in the future, but we have not allowed that within these numbers. So if you were to sell the sites where the CBC and the corner site, for example, there would be some revenue, but it would be at the back end of the process. And the last scenario we looked at was what if we built a new station in its current location? So in order to make that happen, we'd obviously have to move existing fire operations out. And that has to be accommodated in temporary facility. And it means then that we'd have to do a phased demolition because we want to be able to create a new fire station there. So you may remember the first scenario where we built an addition first. We demolished part of the building, put a new addition in. We would then move E C C and dispatch into that new addition. And then the second phase of new construction would be we'd move fire operations out, complete the new building. So this is still a phased approach. Ultimately, the site for administration would become available for repurposing. The advantage, of course, is the new building will meet all the current requirements, both operationally, functionally, and from a building code perspective. We ensure that we only have a single move for E E C and dispatch, and administration and operations are consolidated. And by doing so, we're creating some operational efficiency. Plus, fire operations and administration aren't going to be operating out of one building, not two. And that's an advantage. The cost for this scenario, you'll see very similar initial capital cost to some of the other options. It's a slightly higher life cycle cost. Those are just born out of the fact that there are freeze development. And in fact, some of the costs are due to a longer term life of the new building on that site. So when we look at an overall comparison, and this is intended to be a summary, this is a graph that shows those four scenarios. You'll notice that the gray line indicates the status quo. Basically, you, the graph on the left indicates the amount of money that you spend. The time is represented on the bottom. You'll notice that a status quo allows you to do a minimal amount of capital investment initially, but ten years out, you're going to have to spend some money. And the cost to build that fire hall ten years from now is obviously more than it will be today. And therefore, that line shoots up. You build the new facility, and then there's an ongoing investment. And you'll see at the far end of the of the gray line up there, forty-five years out, you're then looking at a significant upgrade to that building. Over the forty-five-year life, there are staged levels of maintenance and operational costs, just as it is in the existing building today. The other three scenarios are shown in color there, very similar. You'll see in terms of the pattern that goes along, they all require an upfront investment of slightly different value. And some of them have some lower investment as you go along, really born out of the ability to provide a more efficient building. The scenario that renovates the existing building, you'll see, is the lowest line on that graph. And some of the challenges around that is the fact that as you go through, maintaining a partial renovated building is going to be more money. So in final summary, the decision matrix. Major rehabilitation in twenty eighteen would be about one point one for status quo. It would not apply to the other scenarios. The initial capital investment for these three scenarios, you'll see that scenario two is around fifteen and a half million up to about seventeen million for scenario one and three. Just a reminder, scenario two was the one where we partially renovated the existing hall. One and two are the complete new build options. And that that is money that you would have to spend out to twenty nineteen. The number at the top represents twenty-three point one million for a renovated building ten years from now, or sorry, a new building ten years from now. If you look at the total life cycle cost over forty-five years, you can see the comparisons. Scenario two has a slightly lower life cycle cost of thirty-seven point eight. The newer scenarios cost you a little bit more money. But in terms of seismic stability, we're going to carry the risk of that seismic event occurring until the day that you can renovate or replace this building. So there's a high risk with maintaining the status quo. The other three scenarios involve whenever you get into construction, we'll be able to meet the current seismic requirements. They're very similar in that respect and truly meet your post-disaster operational requirements. And what is the risk of system failure? Quite simply, not acting will create a high level of risk for many reasons. And if you think about the needs of a community and the desire to respond to any kind of event through fire operations, carrying that risk is a significant risk. The opportunities to rebuild and renovate will eliminate that risk. And therefore, it's a key decision at this moment. And so just to summarize those key questions, status quo versus renewal. What are the benefits? So status quo, there's a lower initial capital investment, but more expensive in the long run. And there is a higher risk, the new fire station, sorry, there's a high risk of failure until the new fire station is constructed. But if you renew, yes, there's a higher initial capital investment, but there's a lower life cycle cost and a lower risk to operation failure. As a result, then, renewal provides a better, longer-term value to this community. What if we renovate as opposed to building new? What are the pros and cons? If we renovate, there's a higher capital and life cycle cost for the simple reason we can't necessarily bring the existing building up to every potential improvement. So there is a risk that the envelope, for example, won't perform as well as a new building. So there is a lower energy performance, which creates a longer and higher ongoing maintenance cost. There's a higher risk of unknown conditions during construction. So the risk in your construction phase is I start to open that building up, and I find there's more problems than we first thought. If you build new, it's obvious to say that there's a slightly lower capital cost because it's a brand-new construction, and there's a lower life cycle cost. And we can create a higher performing energy building, which means your daily operational cost will go down. And there's a lower risk during construction of unknown conditions. So building new provides a better value and lower risk than renovation. That's the simple conclusion to that. And finally, building on the adjacent site or building on the existing location? If we build on the adjacent site, we have a lower capital cost. One of the challenges, it's a slightly less optimal fire response from that location as opposed to the corner site on Milton. There is a social impact. There are some tenants and some community uses that will be impacted by the loss of that building. If we if we build the existing location, there is a slightly higher capital initial cost, but it's absolutely optimal for fire response in terms of vehicular movement onto the road structures. And we don't impact the C S B building as a result, which means it allows us to continue to provide those social services in that building. So what we're recommending and moving towards is scenario three, which is to build new at the existing location. So we would like to ask council to consider all of those variables. But at this point, our recommendation relative to long-term value is to consider a capital investment over the next two years to build a new station on the corner site. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Mr. Ramah.
I'm sorry, five minutes before your break. So I don't know if you just took a break now so you don't break your thoughts, come back and get to the question period. That's a reasonable thing. Or you can start now and break, or start now and don't break and finish your thoughts.
Okay, so it's council's pleasure. Start now, okay, and go until six o'clock? Until six o'clock. We have a break scheduled at six.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, how's the rest of council feel?
Let's deal with this.
Okay. All right, councillor Kep.
Well, yeah, just to get someone on the floor to get on this, the director of staff to include scenario three, build new at the existing location. This was said earlier today and I talked about it. In the twenty eighteen twenty-two financial plan, it would include funding from the general asset manager reserve, the strategic infrastructure, or a combination of both, to be brought forward. And I'd like to speak to that motion like a second.
Is there a second there? Second, just moved by councillor Kep, seconded by councillor Farrelly. Councillor Kep versus speaker.
Yeah, well, my point is that the building is old and tired and known after quite a few years. The seismic event we're waiting for now, the risk is no different today, tomorrow, or the day out here. It's still the risk. It's the same whether we do it in here or not. The current twenty-seventeen design is huge and stepped up, but it's going to make it a lot better for the location in front of it. The location for me, the answer, good one. About the waterfront and fire boats and all that, that's where we know in the future. I know we've got a separate thing. I really couldn't worry about the E C C. You talk about what's the point of it? You can tend that. You just bang it all up and move it. So leave that one alone. You better just forget that one right now and leave it alone. So my point is, this is important. It's probably spend the money now to improve the process down the line. I guess my one question is, this way with building, tearing it all down and building it, I think we need to add a bigger communication center and look at what was gone to Vancouver or an island, an island nine-one-one type of service or completing a three-one-one service for our regional district. Starting again to those communications and certain infrastructure too. Also, though, have a concern with an E C C in an operational fire hall. The two don't always work. There is an E C C running. It's hard. People are coming in and out, and the fire hall is trying to run. You know, it was like good other times. Some have seen that. They just booted the fire hall out. They go somewhere else and the E C C runs. So but operations of our communication, operational communications and broader communications, R C P dispatch and police alert, we can make money off and have a system. If we're spending a bit more now, maybe it'd be worthwhile. I guess that's my point of view. I think it needs to be post-earthquake building that's going to be fully operational and have communications of the rest of the island and not to or transferred to ECOM. And I think that was missed because we're being departmentalized. We're servicing one entity, and that's fire hall.
Yeah, if I could just, your worship, just respond to the questions. The current firecom dispatch center, both in footprint and in staffing, allows for the growth. It was designed to have growth to either bring nine-one-one back from ECOM or add additional services within that space. When we were talking about the planning needs within council, it's anticipated that that same size would be replicated. That dispatch center was built to, for four people to be in network in that.
Excellent design.
And then with respect to the E C C, being in the operating fire hall, I think the intent in the new construction would be that there would be a division. Right now, the E C C is completely integrated in the operational elements of the fire station. There would be separate outside entrance and ability for that to operate independently on the fire station. But yet be attached.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. So I've got councillors Yocum, Thor, Bassford, and councillor Hall.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. Yeah, I'll be supporting this motion. It's pretty really dated and there is an understatement. And I don't find anything hearing about that slide of that air conditioning outside the window there. Thought it was a home for a minute. Anyways, of course, here in snow, two questions. First one is a bit about the timeframe. Because I remember we were discussing, it was last year at this time, about the growth of Westwood Jingle Pot Way. And there was a time there. So you guys, I understand, I did hear you accurately, you've done your studies, and this is still ideally the best location. So we would thought you're not somewhere that way towards like center away a bit, but you guys obviously did your homework. And so you guys are so comfortable in that suggesting you guys stay there in that lots that are where we're moving out here. So am I accurate then, before I give a next question?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think it's important to recognize there's a lot of detailed analysis that goes into response time. We have to meet a target of six-minute response times. In doing so, there's a lot of pre-managed analysis that's done within the fire service that actually provides that data to us. The short answer is it was considered, we actually considered about four or five other potential sites in the center of the town. And we looked at those and compared them. And it's still proved out that the current location is the right one.
And just to wrap up my comments or questions, it's, I thank Lee and Mike or Sean for their questions for this. But nonetheless, two and three, the seismic upgrades were done at the same time as this archaic hall. So will they need future seismic upgrades as well as this was sort of discussed in this site?
If if you want to bring them in line with the current code, they will be, yeah. They only meet a certain capacity based back on the ninety-eight code, I'm assuming. That was the one that they would have.
Okay. So reality is sooner or later, those will need a seismic upgrade down the road.
Correct. But they were built more recently. All I'm saying is that a more recently built hall could probably accommodate seismic upgrade more efficiently and more effectively than an old nineteen sixty-six building. Because often, I don't want to get into too much detail, but the seismic load transfer from roof to the foundation is one of the key drivers now. And often that means that we've we've got to go subterranean to do some additional stiffening and support on these buildings. Often, the newer buildings actually are easier to achieve that than trying to do that here.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Thor.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, thank you very much, Mr. Robb. I appreciate your presentation. I'm certainly going to support this recommendation. I think this is something that we need to make a priority and to act on as quickly as possible. So in my opinion, status quo is not a viable option at all. And I really appreciated your report, the way you took us step by step very logically through the options, the pros and cons, and focused us that way. So I don't have any questions. I appreciate the thoroughness of the report and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Councillor Bassford.
Thank you for the presentation. My first question, I have a few basic staff. Why over forty-five years? Why payback over forty-five years? My first question, I have a few with staff, why over 45 years? Why payback over 45 years?
Let's see.
What we did for someone who has 40 years, that's kind of the industry standard for a building. That, and what we did was we took it five years past that to capture that one major maintenance on the status quo at year 45. To make them more comparable.
So essentially, so follow, so it essentially doubles the price.
That last one in the last five years was $389,000. So it was just a, so what we have is a maintenance schedule of major maintenance that is done at 10 years, 20 years, 25 and 30. So each one of the scenarios includes those major maintenance at those points. And why we went to the extra five years was to capture that one last major maintenance piece.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, so with that scenario, you may remember that we talked about replacing the hall in 10 years. And then from that point on, it has a cycle of maintenance that takes you out into the future. The other three scenarios actually started 10 years earlier, because we're building them today. And so that maintenance cycle going to a 40-year point where it actually kicks up, you know, a major upgrade. In the renovation option, the status quo option, we're not getting this. So we wanted to have a more reasonable comparison. By pushing out another five years, you then see the impact of that on that building. Does that make sense?
It does, but it's not my question. So it's 16, it's $17 million, it's $40 million over the 45 years. So that's my point. So this building, $16 million, paid for it in five years. Correct?
Under five, so it's not.
It's not.
It's for life.
Sure, it's for life. So I think there's a mix of, so there's a payment schedule, and there's a life cycle piece. If Deborah could explain the difference between those two.
So, and buildings are trickier too, because they're actually made up of components. They're not like a piece of pipe that kind of has a life cycle. So what we did here is usually a building with the industry standard, because 40 years for a building for it to be at the end of its useful life in functionality. Like this is a great example, this built in the 60s, and it's at the end of its life. You can keep trying to replace components, but it does reach a point where it isn't functional. It is not current building code, sold for buildings, that's 40 years. What we did is again, just added on that additional five years to capture that last major maintenance piece for one of the scenarios. To make them as comparable as possible.
So I get that comparison from status quo to one, two, and three. So I get.
Yeah.
So not like Bev and Park, not like Bev and Park, 40, 45 years is. So, my next question then would be, the cost of the Chase River Fire Hall when it was built. How much did the cost of the Chase River Fire, what was the cost of the Chase River Fire Hall?
I believe it was.
4.2.
Yeah, I believe it was around three. We could have to find out.
Okay, thank you. So the reason I ask that question is because, do I understand correctly that the amount of office space required is somewhere between 500 square feet? The admin portion, that is being moved over from the CDC building or whatever.
3,250? 3,250 to support the admin and prevention of the fire.
Right. So, and will the fire hall component be the same as or similar to the Chase River one? Or the proposed H2A1, which forecast to be three to four million dollars, if it was property?
Your worship, the fire station would be similar in size, only built to accommodate for future growth, perhaps six or eight people in the future.
Six or eight people in the future from in the next 45 years, sometime in the next 45 years.
Okay. With the ECC, the dispatch center, fire, and that's where the square footage shakes out. And I believe station four, the most recent fire station we built, is in the neighborhood of 6,000 square feet.
So the fire hall itself is pretty much, it's very similar, yes. And it was approximately three and a half to four million dollars, or in that range. I would have to look at the exact number, but somewhere in that. Next question.
Sorry, can we just be clear though?
Yeah.
The new facility is around 11,300 square feet. Is that right, fire operations? Am I right? On top of that, you add 3,250. So the total facility is in the region of about 15,000 square feet. Is that correct? Now that compares with your previous hall, bearing in mind, there's more operational and other needs. Also, the size of the fire trucks, because of the tender sizes, make the base sizes bigger and larger. Plus, current standards are also driving us. So in terms of the amount of area, to go back to the comparison of the previous hall isn't necessarily the most, the right way to look at it, correct? So we have to be careful about comparing a $6 million facility with this one. The numbers we've been giving you are the current best practice standards for fire halls.
That would have been in $2,008 still.
Thank you.
So does that clarify, is there something more you need?
Mr. McCray, do you want to respond?
No, Miss Duncan, I actually already did that part. Thank you.
Thank you. This may be my last question, but have we contemplated consolidating other emergency services? On-site, new build, I, ambulance, to share, and perhaps they may stay rent? Or lease at any point in time, if their property that's most near to it also is on seismic? Or, which I get, isn't our responsibility. However, have we taken into consideration any other, I'll just call them for lack of a better term, retail opportunities, if we're contemplating spending somewhere around $17 trillion for emergency services?
That's a fair question. I think Craig.
So, yes, that is, that is a very good question. We did consult with the BC ambulance service. And knowing that some other areas of British Columbia, they are entertaining, integrating into other facilities. The unfortunate truth of the matter is that the emergency health services provincially is under, in a transition right now. And they aren't able to plan at this point in time to determine whether they would fit into a building such as ours, or whether they're going to shift their model to something completely different. So those conversations did take place between myself and the superintendent, and they were just unable to commit a mystery.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you. I guess I'll just continue with what on the councillor Bestwick's lines. How can the government dictate 2017 seismic codes when their buildings are falling apart? And they can't even do it. So that's my first tiff, or whatever you want to call it, against the government. So for them not to move ambulance to a facility, that is, wow. Built to 2017 code, isn't that stupid not to move if they have the choice? That's nothing to do without us, but I'm just saying, the government, if we're offering them seismically safe facilities, so an ambulance can actually still be usable if earthquake comes, I don't get that. So I, that was one of my questions, is why aren't we asking the ambulance to come in? We rent out across the street to the RCMP at a good rate. I think we make good money off of it. Again, that building is old too. So if 2017 standards are coming up, and we got a seismic upgrade that building for them, because hey, it's the RCMP. It's just as important as the fire, according to whoever you ask. But they need a building that's safe. So we're going to upgrade that one next door? Because that makes no sense to me, because that's going to be, whenever we do it at these rates, astronomical. So for $17 million, which I'll get to later, it still seems pricey for not having a building that can be our command center. So I'm leery about that. Really, really leery about that, because we have to upgrade the police station. So now, are we going to consider, with these new rules coming in 2017, the entire police station should be upgraded now? Because that was never discussed. We talked about addition. So now we're looking at a brand-new police station to meet these codes, because I'm blown by it, unengineered by any means. So I have questions about that one. So it's, I agree, we needed a new fire station. There's no doubt about it. I think we can get better value out of this building, is where I would like to see. For everything. Fire, police, ambulance. I think it's critical. I do have concerns about building a Cadillac of buildings. I'm tired of the city paying for Cadillac buildings. This building, for example, with that 30,000 piece of art up there.
Fifteen.
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 Fifteen, sorry. So I look at this, you know, one of my other biggest tips is I hate having all these numbers out for every big book guy. So when the contractor comes and bids, he knows to bid 9 million, 920,000 dollars. Well, minus the design contingency, a 15%, which we told them, so they're going to bid 8 million dollars. So they're, they're bidding 8 million bucks, you'll get it. So I really don't like doing this stuff in public, which I've always said, but it's always been my tip. Being a business person, I just can't spill my eggs out to everybody or spill my beans. Rambling on Cadillac model, which I do not like, we're giving 1.25% to public art. I look at that number, $125,000 of public art in a fire station. How do I tell that to the residents in the nine-month, we spent $125,000 of public art? In a fire station that most of them will never see or goat? Other than the kids, don't get it wrong. My son loves going to the fire station, but it's not like a public art. So I do have concerns about this. I don't like the price tag. Just don't like the price tag. And I can't support councillor Kip's motion, because I don't think that we should be guilty of saying, money is cheap to borrow. Let's borrow it. We got it down to one point, you're showing this at 3%, but it's already proven to us that you got it for 1.7% for refinancing the comfort center. I know new bills are different in financing, but when we talk about borrowing, and who is going to be paying for this facility? It's the people that are 40 years, they're coming into the nine-month to pay for, not the ones right now. I'm not going to increase taxes at all. The residents in the nine-month right now to be paying for this building for the next 40 years, when the guy that's coming 10 years from now should still be paying. So I'm an advocate that we should be borrowing this money to build this police, this station. So I can't support it. I do support a new station, but not the way that councillor Kip has motioned it, as using reserves. Because it doesn't seem to make any sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Bama.
Thank you, worship. Just two parts of councillor Hall. The first one is an easy one. The detailed costings that you have there are preliminary in nature. In any case, if you remember, when we talked about the change in how we do business, I agree with you. We shouldn't have these things out there, but we do. So that's the transition piece. The issue of Cadillacs, if you remember, we agreed that now that we have a functioning poverty system, the video discussion about what's going to be in the building, not the building, is going to happen in the public where it's coming. So that's where this discussion is going to happen. The third question, or that issue is really the motion that councillor Kip has assumed borrowing. And debt service would come from those funding sources identified. That's what it is.
But not borrowing.
We are borrowing.
And the origin of this would change your concern also.
So we are borrowing, and the money to pay for that debt will come from asset management as well as business strategies and financials.
Okay. So, and I just wanted to answer the one question. The reason I don't want to see this, and the reason that I know that we're going to get down to the needed greedy, but what Miss Cunningham sees is 1, 16.9 million dollars. Guess what shows up in the paper tomorrow? 16.9 million dollars shows up in the paper. And that's the problem I have, is then the public is on us for 16.9 million dollars, when we haven't even negotiated, it might be fall, fall, 13, 14. But it's already out in the public domain that we're at 16.9 million dollars. And that makes it hard to explain to the public that, no, these are guests, they're preliminary, yes, and I understand that. But what's going to show up tomorrow's paper? So, so how do we tell the media, say, hey, this isn't, this is just a guess? Well, we can't tell the media to write whatever we feel. So I have, that's what my concerns are.
So if we were to see, it's called the price of democracy in transparency?
Yeah.
And we have to, that's what.
I agree.
I know.
I agree. Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you. So I like the plan, and I think it's reasonable. I have a couple of questions about it. And maybe I missed the reasoning in here. But, and I, I don't know why we need to put the, all the administration of the buildings. Is there, are there issues of best practice? Have we experienced problems with the admin building leaks or else?
Craig, do you want to say?
What's the stance with that?
So, your worship, the most common law of the fire services is where administration and fire prevention and fire operations are integrated under one roof. Councillors who have been on councils a long time will recall, probably about 12 years ago, when we developed the dispatch center, that left no room for an integration component. Those components were then moved out of the building. There's two reasons really to integrate into one building. The first is, we're eliminating one facility that can become available for other uses. And the second is, simply the relationship building of integrating operations, being able to streamline communications and work flow.
Okay, thank you. The second one, I may sound, it comes from me, because I'm not usually that concerned about it. But I've been told that parking for firefighters is quite compact. And if you move the admin over, are we going to be able to accommodate, in your view, is that?
There is a constraint on the site in terms of providing all the parking need. And we have looked at other options of providing staff parking in other locations closer to the new station. It's critical that the operational vehicles, the movement of those vehicles, both on and off the site, and any support structures to go, they have priority, and therefore we would do that. And then the staff would have to be accommodated on a city lot a little further down the street. Certainly, the size of the site does not accommodate all of the parking need currently, and nor will it in the future. It's really important as a consideration around the discussion of BC ambulance, for example. But adding them into the mix actually creates even more strain on that infrastructure. Because we have to move those ambulance vehicles in, that's more bays, that's more vehicle movement, and the site simply doesn't accommodate.
Okay. I pretty much think that that is the question, but I have one more on your side. But you may have answered it with regard to the one. Yeah, I had questions about the one west of Third. But if we go ahead on this, and this may not be a question for you, it's probably a question for Mr. Bama. What does that do to our opportunity to build in the north end? Is that off the table completely? Alan Bay.
Through your worship, I think Mr. Fine chief could actually answer the question.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So Fire Station 6, I believe in 2015 was removed from the financial plan in council's direction. The new fire planning process that we just approved, prior to the spring. So what that's intended to do is continue to bring demands for service and statistics around response coverage in that area and other areas of the city, more regularly to council, so that those decisions can be amended and updated as needed. So we're right now in the first three-year cycle of the service delivery plan. The intent is that we would see council a couple of times before 2019, again, to review those numbers. We're going to 2019 to 2021, three-year cycle. Those things will be discussed at that, or at council's, I think, expression.
So that doesn't actually change my mind on this. I think that this is a good plan. We need to proceed with that. But it was my view in 2009 that we should have a fire hall out in Hamlet Bay. So, uh, disappointed that we took it off the 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 plan. Um, but I guess updates on, um, the impact. Please, just looking forward to them.
Thank you, any other first time speakers? Okay, uh, Mr. Ramon, did you wanna respond?
Yes, I wanted to to speak about Fire Station Number Six. Uh, what what the chief is saying is it's not lost.
Yes, I got that.
That's number one. Number two, uh, I think as as time goes and and we gather additional statistics. And also, uh, if you if you recall, one of the reasons why we moved it along was we were not, we had a list that consensus on location. And we're still doing some work on that as well. Uh, and as he's saying, in in the three year cycle, we may be at a point where we either expedite that or bring it in the next cycle for for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Ramon, I I recognize that the site, uh, was under reconsideration. Um, I recognize that the fire service will be bringing the statistics on a regular basis, so we have more information to make a decision about Haven Bay. Um, all all that being said, I am disappointed that we have moved forward on that.
Thank you. Councillor Bestwick is up, however, I'd like to debate myself. Um. I support the notion of replacing this building and not, uh, not renovating it. And do not support, uh, scenario number three. Because at the end of the day, you end up with, scenario number three, you end up with one new building and two pieces of property with old buildings on it. City of nine mill has way too many old buildings. It's time to get rid of some of these old buildings. Scenario two, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, you end up with, uh, you end up with one building, houses everything. And you've got two pieces of property that you can do something with. Whether it's affordable housing, whether it's other uses, you can get rid of those buildings. It's time to start getting rid of some of the liabilities that we have in the nine mill. Uh, I'm sorry that I agree with councillor Bestwick, that if we, if V H S are saying, we don't know what we're doing right now, too bad. We need to now, thank you very much that you've gone and looked at that, I don't think we've tried hard enough. The province is telling us as communities that we have to work together with our school districts and our and other universities and cities. And we all have to participate for them to say, uh, we don't know what we're doing yet, we don't know what our service delivery model is. It's time for us to take political measures into our own hands and start to go over some of the the politicians and saying, you keep parking on this. We wanna build a new fire hall. We believe it's more efficient to have you in that building with us. It's time we, I think we need to take a lot, a harder look at that one. I can support and fully endorse, uh, scenario two, but not scenario three, so I'm gonna be voting against three. Councillor Bestwick.
Thank you. Well, I I just, I just harken to the four year facility cycle. Plus the five year, uh, inclusion to be able to cover off the five, ten, or ten, twenty, thirty year upgrades. On all city facilities. So here we are, we're discussing the fire hall one replacement, which I believe, like, I think the majority needs to be replaced. No, no question about it. But in the scheme of our, and our city is is aging and we're in that sunset place with a lot of our facilities. That I don't know what our priorities for, if we put all of our forty-five to sixty year old public facilities, civic facilities. On a list that I could need. Replaced or upgraded. What's our number one priority? And how are we gonna finance? And how much are, you know, increase our taxes? In order to achieve all of these necessary upgrades and improvements. So Public Works and Engineering needs a new facility. R C M P needs a new facility. Fire Hall Number One needs a new facility. Fire Hall Number Six needs built. Bevan Park needs rebuilt. Ken Cool needs replaced. Chase River Migration Center, or whatever we wanna call it, needs replaced. Departure Bay Activity Center is old and decrepit. The Departure Bay Activity Center on the waterfront. The Quinell Franklin Street Gymnasium here. So, uh, so where, where in the, um, I'm sorry, I don't mean to have a back to that.
No, that's okay.
But where, and this is to staff, where, where we have, I can rattle off ten facilities right now for operations that need replaced. So, but I'm not suggesting that the Fire Hall Number One isn't number one. I also think that to the mayor's point and to councillor Hong's point and everybody else's, that the emergency services of the accidents coming in, well, maybe the community services building. Is removed, now there is a handful of departments, but our bus service is gonna get better and everybody's gonna take transit. So parking shouldn't be an issue. That our current, uh, management facility could become the community services building, I guess. For other other needs or other services. So that entire block, if you will, when Milton Perdote, not block, but becomes available for ambulance, fire, parking. And the community, so there's always ifs and other ways and other iterations to make things happen, but they just cost more money. So what's our facility, and I didn't put that to park in there. So what, the social center needs replaced, the pool at Bevan needs replaced. I'm not gonna mention any of it. So. One part likes me is fixed, replaced. So where in this list of seven hundred and fifty million, six hundred million dollars of facility improvements, or whatever the number is? Well, what's our ten year, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five year plan for forty to sixty year old facilities?
Mr. Ramon.
Thank, thank you, I should, I'll start with the the easy one. The easy one has to do with ambulance and the province. Uh, I I agree that probably there is some political pressure that could be applied, but you could be waiting for a very long time. So I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, the second one has to do with the priorities on facilities. Uh, I don't have to inform me, uh, obviously, our infrastructure facilities are old, uh, we're coming to that. Uh, I would probably, uh, see a newer list of of what happens with all facilities, not just fire stations. And what needs what upgrade and that's spoken to, uh, through the the asset management document. But what makes Fire Station One different is that this is one fire station or location or facility that you want to remain standing. In case of an emergency. So that's, that's the difference that you're dealing with here. It doesn't mean that every other facility is secondary or inferior to Fire Station Number One. I think if 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 you were making a choice, you you probably wanna be able to save more lives by having a facility that remain standing. You are able to coordinate your responses and everything else, I think we can deal with that. We can, uh, round up all our asset management and and say, here's where other facilities are getting worked on, uh, and and the cost for doing that. Uh, but why this one is isolated, it has this added, I think, uh, function for you that you want it to remain standing. Uh, in case if it's going to a major emergency, so that's, that's the ranking we would, we would, I would use for now.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, uh, I have let councillor Kip as the last speaker, and then we'll call the question, councillor Kip.
Oh, well, I was, it's, it's a foundational thing for me, the fire department, I'm mandatory foundational discretion of your service, I've done one before service review. And these are mandatory foundations, so it's important. And I like the idea of a, a safety precinct area that is coordinated, connected to the R C F P and ambulances there. Other police, federal, provincial police, which was important. Um, I just in favor of number three because of the funding a little and and getting it moving more. I mean, I think everyone understands we're gonna build it all, and if you're concerned with funding, um, make a amendment, the motion to include something else, do something quick. That's why I support it, I mean, it's a, it's a D.
Thank you, your worship. So there's the, the recommendation, uh, is has been moved and seconded and we call the question, all is in favor. Opposed, show councillor Hong have a delicate opposed motion passes. So, uh, our scheduled break, uh, we have now, we have not, so it will be ten minutes. Cedar Le, Cedar Road Lift Station, uh, cautionary agreement, Mr. McCray, you're up again, where the next Mr. McCray?
Mr. Rosen.
And the purpose is to enter a cautionary agreement with the regional district in nine mill, costs to operate and maintain the Cedar Road pump station. And there's a recommendation, page one sixty-one.
Who's that recommendation?
Page number four, thank you. Moved by councillor Hong and seconded by councillor Bestwick. Discussion, we wanna, this council wishes to have a presentation. Mr. McCray.
Perfect. Um, thank, sorry, just one thing, I left my glasses upstairs. Uh, so, thank you, worship, this has to do with what council had reviewed in the regional district in nine mill about a week and a half ago. Uh, this is, uh, the, the city inherited, or took over, I should say, the, uh, the station. And the flows that we're receiving from the regional district require us to upsize the pipe. This is simply a response by the R D N, uh, for the amount of forty-five thousand dollars per year to compensate the city for its future.
Wonder if I could ask the question then? Who pay, who's gonna pay the requisition? Is it, is it us?
The, the regional district will provide this for forty-five thousand dollars for that system.
Okay. What's our percentage?
Nine, um, ninety-nine percent.
Ninety-nine percent, okay, thank you. So this is an exercise one. So any other, just any other questions, Mr. Ramon?
Councillor.
Thank you. So this is an exercise, we're not covering their cost.
Uh, it's the regional district service.
Yes.
That we're talking about tonight, of which they will send us a requisition and we'll pay ninety-nine percent on the cost.
Oh, they'll send us a rec. And they're gonna put us in waste.
It's just an ownership, money coming in, money going out.
Just wanna make sure we're not covering all this.
Okay, call the question, all is in favor. Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Uh, energy step code, consultation presentation, to me, by Mr. Carson.
Uh, thank you, worship, so we have a presentation from Mr. Dave Stewart, the city's environmental planner. We have an information report, uh, in front of you tonight, and Dave is gonna talk about the new energy step code. It's been adopted by the province, which sets, um, energy performance and modeling standards. So Dave's gonna go through a presentation with you, thank you, answering any questions.
Thank you, your worship, the members of council, so as Mr. Carson said, I'm here to give you a brief presentation, I know it's been a long time already, um, regarding the B C energy step code. So I thought I'd start by just mentioning what energy step code is. So what it is, it's actually a building energy standard, as Mr. Carson said, that's, uh, largely measures performance on buildings of all types. Um, primarily part three and part nine buildings. It's a voluntary compliance path, and what that means is it's, there is an option, um, that either can be adopted by local governments or developers can choose to to use those performance steps. It is an indicator of future code requirements, so basically, I'm gonna speak to this in a little bit, but the province wants to get to net zero by twenty thirty-two. And this is one of their their paths, their steps, in the pond, to to achieve that. Um, it is multi-partner and collaborative, and really good news is it was adopted by the province prior to the rate dropping in, uh, recently, and it was adopted on April eleventh. So just to give you an idea of some of the context, um, what led to this, the first is the B C Building Act. As I think most of council knows, as of this December, local governments are not requ, are unable to have their own building bylaw in the fadwas. Um, it's also there to create some consistency. Throughout the province, there are a number of density bonusing and other schemes that reference Built Green, LEED, um, Energy Star, all the various different energy and building, green building standards. The idea here was to get some consistency across the province, this is something developers have asked for, and the province has delivered on. I'm saying the province, but it's, as I said, it's very collaborative, B C Hydro has been involved, U D I, I'll go over that in a second. The second part is the B C Climate Leadership Plan, which was recently adopted. And that B C Climate Leadership Plan does speak to a net zero building code by twenty thirty-two. As I mentioned before, this is a way to achieve that. Um, and it also directly addresses the need for an energy step code for local governments to implement. As I mentioned, it's a collaborative process, so on the left you see the logos of all the various provincial organizations involved, including, uh, L G M A, for example, U D I. Various home builders associations, architects, engineers, you name it. As well, what doesn't really show on there is the, uh, various local governments that have been involved. So quite a number of local government representatives like myself have been involved in the working group to establish this throughout the province. Primarily from the lower mainland and lower Vancouver Island. Um, so really what this is about is about measuring building efficiency, both envelope efficiency and equipment efficiency, and as, as you stressed already, it's performance based. Right now, the B C Building Code, I think it's section nine point three six, the B C Building Code includes, uh, massive document, um, that it's more of various green building standards. This is, this is based on blow air door tests and and doing a energy audit, which gets me to the steps. So there is two different sets of steps, one for part three buildings, which are generally multifamily, uh, and part nine, which are generally single family dwellings. So there are some small multifamilies that would also be part nine. And depending on the building configuration, there's obviously a little bit of room for leeway there. And basically, the way everyone who talks about step code talks is they generally set it up between lower steps and higher steps. Those lower steps are fairly easy to achieve. Um, step one is really just meeting building code. Um, and very little additional cost, pretty much zero additional cost, whereas higher steps, you will be looking at some additional costs in the short term with savings in the long run, of course. So getting an idea of what those steps are, step one, and this is using a four step process, probably five steps, of course, for single family. And we'll see that in a second. Step one is what, um, is referred to as enhanced compliance.
Let's create that.
Let's create that. Uh, so what that means is, we're looking at basically meeting the existing building code standards, but through a performance based system as opposed to the current prescriptive system. So what that is, is having an energy audit come, done for your house, doing the blow air door test, and really seeing if you're meeting the building code. Um, when they did start doing tests on new homes with, that use section nine point three six, the building code. Realized that only one third of those are actually meeting the standards that the building code requires. So this is, um, the province's way of trying to achieve that, B C Hydro's way of actually achieving what the code already says. It's also more flexible, um, so instead of having to go through this really prescriptive list, um, the builders can choose how they wanna meet that, meet that energy requirement. That, uh, was that what I mean the other day, and I think they said there's over a million different ways that you can make this work. Steps two and three are just simply better performance, so increased energy efficiency. Um, generally, we're looking at in single family buildings, right, ten percent for step two and twenty percent for step three. And step four, you're getting now towards net zero already, your passive house standard. So this is a really good slide that sort of summarizes it for part nine buildings for single family. As you can see, um, on the right hand side, you can see the improved efficiency. And on the, in the middle there is sort of the equivalent standards, and that's also in your council report of what these are roughly equivalent to. So step two would be roughly equivalent to Energy Star, step three to Built Green, and so on. Um, as it says there again, and step one is really just enhanced compliance with the current code requirements already. So how does this play for local governments? It really is up to us as a local government to decide how we wanna use this, so. What, I really like this graph, cause it shows sort of some of the options, so starting off local government. So starting off local government A on the left-hand side, if you're looking at the screen, that would be more of a conservative approach for a local government who maybe doesn't feel they have the capacity to, to implement this. And they're looking at really an incentive-based program, like a density bonusing program only, and that's it. Local government B would be more of an aggressive or innovative approach, I suppose, where you may have that capacity, and what they're looking at is, is a tiered approach as well, where perhaps requiring step one is through a building bylaw, which is something that we are able to do. Or, and then, as you go up, so tier two would be a rezoning policy. So for example, if an applicant comes in for a rezoning application, they need to meet step two, and that'd be covenanted. And then tier three and four would be density bonusing. And the last one is a regional approach, and we have been talking to municipalities throughout the entire island on this step code. Actually, we're one of the founding members of a, a group that's formed to deal with this through local government staff, and that's to identify what is everyone doing and try and identify a regional approach. So builders, builders building Lady Smith versus Nanamo, they can expect a, a similar sort of approach to this, and that's showing that. So tier one, building bylaw, tier two, again, citywide, and, and a phased approach as well, similar to what building code has done before, saying, you know what, in twenty nineteen, this is what's going to happen, to give builders that ability to prepare, educate, and get the capacity. Which leads me to my last slide, which are next steps. And that's where we're work, we are working on an education program with builders islandwide again, so we're part of that, and we're also starting our own program here in Nanamo to educate local stakeholders. Local stakeholders, I mean, I'm using builders a lot, but local stakeholders means everyone, citizens as well, this applies to everybody, but certainly, we're looking at home builders, developers, those who are, and I mentioned islandwide education program. And finally, the net final step would be reporting back to council with a plan to implement this, some ideas on how we want to do that based on that consultation. So that's it for me. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess on step five, it looks like net zero or passive house. Is that what the Nanamo Aboriginal Center is going to be building on Bowland Road? Or so they're reaching step five?
That's correct, yeah. Step fourteen oh six Bowen Road is a passive house, so that would be considered step five, which is basically very little or no energy required to eat, um, because of the envelope so tight.
Okay, and then, moving on. I notice that this is for housing mainly and in most, I'm like, what about commercial? Because I know that we talked about the LEED stuff in commercial buildings. Are we going to have a program coming out for commercial buildings to give them variances and, or density bonus, or whatever you want to call on that retrospect? So are we just focusing on houses right now as this program that applied to?
Great question. So, your worship, to your councillor Hong, because we're in climate zone four, it does apply, commercial does apply here, where one of the, in climate zone four is Vancouver Island and the lower mainland. The rest of the province, it doesn't, so mostly the information that's come out has been on residential, that's why I focused on it. But yeah, the step code does apply to commercial buildings where we are as well. So there is an ability to apply it to commercial if we choose to.
Okay. Any other questions? See, no, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. We received the report by councillor Hong and seconded by councillor Kip. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, down, pass correspondence, most motion, under business. Delegations. First delegation we have is Ms. Susan Oakley regarding proposal of a new bylaw for future project planning.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you. Hi, my name's Sue Oakley, I live at four ninety-six Ninth Street, have since nineteen eighty-one. We've raised our children in Harwood, they've both bought homes in Harwood, we have seven grandchildren. We're here to stay, in other words, we're not flipping our house and moving on. According to for you today, as a result of what I've seen since about two thousand two, different great ideas come up, and the city's all for it, and we end up with a divided community. We end up with a no campaign and a yes campaign. And I'd really like to see that end, because every time it happens, it tears the fabric of this beautiful town just a little bit more. And what I'd like to see is a fairness bylaw. Now, I know nothing about the writing of bylaws, I'd like to see the legal department come up with the wording for it. But what I'd like to see, I hope is to see a bylaw that would give any expensive idea, and this is outside of things like fire halls, we know we need fire halls, this is things like event centers and conference centers, and things that are sort of outside of the purview of what I see as the core services a city's there to provide. Anytime we get an idea like that, and some of them are great ideas, I'm not dissing any of the ideas, what I want to see is the prevention of this division. I'd like to see, right away, at the beginning of an idea, before we have to start up yeses and nos, and people feeling like we're being, you know, overwhelmed again, and, and we're getting expensive experts in to tell us this is what we should be doing, and guess what? These are the same experts that are going to make a whole bunch of money doing this, you know? Always seems to come off that way. I'd like to see a bylaw that would immediately allow us to have someone playing devil's advocate, immediately divide whatever funds and whatever energies, whatever staff time, in half, so that we're looking immediately why we should do it and why we shouldn't. Now, I know this sounds utopian, it sounds outside of the normal way business is done, but we're just homeowners and taxpayers, we're not business people, and we feel like we're being raring sometimes, and, and it's, it's not a good feeling. And I'd like to find a way to stop tearing our community apart with these, you know, whenever we have a plan. Let's, let's immediately allow access to both sides at the public meetings. Immediately give funding to both sides equally for their printing and their research and their meetings and their signs and whatever, so that it's fair. So that it's not an us against the city, we don't want that ever again. That's my proposal, kind of in a nutshell. I mean, I can word it out for you, but a fearless bylaw that would not see us rip our city apart every time a great idea comes along. You know, a lot of us kind of old-fashioned, and we think that cities are there to do the things that cities are to do, and, and let's leave private business to do business. I mean, we look at our downtown now, and we've got this big hole where Gene Burns and A and B Sound used to be, wouldn't that have been a great place for a conference center? Instead of destroying our sort of heritage downtown, it's hindsight's twenty-twenty. We look now and we see the back of the library of the Port Theatre in our town square, it just makes it look like a, you're standing behind a warehouse. Wouldn't it been great if the museum, the library was on the front, so you could be reading a book and looking out at the ocean? I mean, if we hadn't have had all these experts telling us, if we'd have sat down right from the start and thought, how, what's the best way to do this? Let's look at it all openly, honestly, and without any, you know, preconceived ideas. I don't know, can, rather than just accept the motion, does anybody have any reaction to what I'm saying? Is it too utopian?
Councillor, councillor Brennan.
I don't know if it's too utopian or not, but I know it's been done before here. Yes, I was told, and probably general remember this, I think, when the proposal was to build the Nanamo Aquatic Center, there was, I guess the majority of council were not sure about it, and, and that seemed to be the, the way it was going, the note. And there was a, a group that was really adamant that they wanted that Mac Center, and they wanted the bigger pool. And council gave that yes group, which was not the predominant group, ten thousand dollars to prepare their case and take it to the people. So it has been done.
I wasn't aware of that history, but, but, but this would be something that would be in place?
Yes, I get that.
Bylaw, so that it would automatically click into place before we got ourselves in problems. That's, in a nutshell, what I'm proposing.
Lady, councillor Kip. Thank you very much. It's interesting, it's, it's based on our values, and my value is different. I like the event center, I thought it would be a great deal, and you don't, but so it's a value, so it's hard enough to that. Now, when you start to, to, to look at where you need to get the public in, is law enforcement, you fix up a community plan, people need to study that and get involved, and that's happening, because that's looking at how our city's going to grow. Looking involved in our strategic plan, and getting involved in that, so we know what are our strategies. Quite got lost in this last thing, the concerns of the event center and the division. The division, the fight is not bad in a guy like me, it's just part of the world, you know? The world's fighting, it's killing itself, and we're worried about how fair we are. The world's smashing itself apart right now, and we're worried about how fair we are. That tells me how limited we are to our real concerns. We don't have the worldly concerns right now of a lot of things. So for me, a fairness bylaw is absolutely important, and it's supposed to be built into our community actions, and it's there. The ombudsman has that fairness checklist, it's there to adopt and there to live by. But that's not always the way, you know, some of the things, if you look at the event center, sixty percent of the bottom are cared about of the eligible voters, only forty percent, we're not, it's a forty percent vote, but thirty-eight percent voted of the eligible voters. And if that was high percentage, then no, but a high percentage of people didn't even get involved. So it's hard as a councillor to sit here and say, you have to get everybody the information, we put out as much as we can to try and educate. And I'm not an expert on all the financial stuff, so that's why we bring in experts, so people sitting on staff are experts, and we bring in to try and do that. But the fairness checklist is in the ombuds person's thing, in the meeting structure, how you get to into talk to us, and whether that's valued. And what we have is quite a division between governance and operations. So we tell our staff what the budget's going to be, and they tell us what's going to be built, or how it's going to be built, and what's going to be out there. Like if you saw it today, I've never seen that report, other than I got it the other day on the fire department, a sixteen million dollar thing, and I saw that report a couple of days ago, I had to make a decision very quickly. How do I get the public involved or something that quickly is, is tough, and what we're trying to keep moving business for, but it's absolutely, fairness checklist is absolutely important.
Especially when we're stepping outside of what's seen as the, the purview of, of city council, the mandate of, of a city.
Well, what is the mandate of the city?
Well, I don't think building hockey arenas for professional hockey players should...
Well, see, that was, see, that was a misconception right off the bat. That was an absolute misconception, and people blew up the hockey as a major venture. So that's, for me, that was a no, a no issue on that one, and I don't want to debate with you, but I want to say, who builds the pools? Who builds the swimming rigs? Who builds the theaters? But no business is going to build any of those. So do you expect business to come in and do a lot of these things, and build our arenas and that? We wouldn't have a Clipper team because we don't have an arena, because no one would build it unless the public knew. Swimming pool, the pool that I fought for, the one that Diane talked about, where our staff wanted to build a small one, fought for the big one, it cost us fifteen million dollars and a billion dollars a year to maintain, over and above what it takes in. So in its eleven years now, it's cost eleven million, and it's going to be failing pretty soon, so it's going to have to be rebuilt. So who does that? Private enterprise. We can't get a hotel built, with private enterprise is hard. So I understand your expectation about being involved in everything, but we need to get involved in the elections, we need to get involved in the OCPs, in the planning, and come to meetings, and be on committees, and that's how people get the voice of council, for council.
But I'd like to, to make sure that, that there's the access, that, that people with a conflicting opinion aren't denied access to have a table at the meeting, and to be, you know, that, that sort of thing has to kind of stop, so that everyone's opinion is valued and listened.
Well, if I can pull up on that too, the caller react is a classic example, is, don't give those people anything, don't bring them into the meetings, have them arrested if they come to a meeting and act up. That was the mandate of this previous administration, to have the police waiting for a peaceful presentation. We didn't do that, we didn't offer a table, that, that thing, and that's some of the biggest deal I've ever heard of. We put out more information on the event center than the pools, the arenas, the theaters that we've done, the event center, we never put out so much information. Was why I signed on, it was too much for people. So appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. McRae.
And just one quick aside, is it not possible, rather than holding by elections if someone for any reason wants to leave council during their term, to just go to the last runner-up?
No.
Why could we not do that?
It's based on the, it's based on the, the community charter.
The community charter doesn't allow for that, or allow for a variation of sorts? Especially when you're further into the term, it just seems like a big expense. Thank you very much for listening, yours is?
So, so when you think about it, the election was two and a half years ago. Things have changed, the issues have changed, people's opinions have changed, people have moved, so have come, it really would not be a, an election. You would be using two years ago issues, two years ago citizens, two years ago assessments, two years ago knowledge. That's why you can't just pick up something that happened two and a half years ago and say, oh, that would do just fine for today.
To get us through till the next election?
Yeah, well, but decisions, yeah, but the decisions were made today for a lot of money. So even though we only have one and a half years left on our term, we're still making decisions at this point that the community wants to be able to choose based on the, the sort of atmosphere of today, making those decisions.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our clerk is constantly reminding me that ten minutes is ten minutes, that includes any questions. So, next delegation, or motion to receive the delegation, please. Councillor Thor, seconded by councillor Hong. All in favor? All motion carries. Next delegation, Miss Sherry Durnford.
I think a couple other people have their hands up to talk to lead this delegation.
Ten minutes. Ten minutes.
The delegation has given ten minutes, but council isn't giving...
No, no, councillor, councillor Foulnot told that, told me that ten minutes includes questions.
You could allow, if, if, if councillors wanted, your worship, to ask some questions. Yeah.
They might as well have it. Councillor.
Any questions, Miss Gureyev or yourself? What did ten minutes become the number for? Delegation takes ten minutes, then there are no questions, that being, that being the case that the delegation takes one minute, then there's nine minutes of questions per minute?
No, I think, I think that, your worship and I just had our communications crossed. It is ten minutes for the delegation.
And questions are open?
Questions could be after that.
Does council wish to bring the delegation back up? Yep, thank you. All good. So our next delegation is Miss Sherry Durnford, Mr. Les Anderson and Wells Warhol, from Tokyo Air.
Actually, we have our third member here too.
Okay.
First, we would like to thank you very much for the invitation from the, at the regional district meeting, and, and you had invited us to come and talk to you a little bit about our exciting proposal, and we very much appreciate it. And we also appreciate that you doubled our time over the RDN. And I think that we have some exciting information here. We also have over five hundred and sixty people that have signed a petition in favor of what we're looking at, and that's just been with limited, limited exposure. We've been going for about a month now, and I'm going to pass it over to Les now to give you the presentation, and then we're all three here to talk to any questions here. Thanks.
Good, thank you, Sherry.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes.
You can take the mic off the stand if you want.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Okay, we're friends of railsta trails of Vancouver Island, and so, just to go through who we are, we're a diverse group of individuals who believe we have a better plan for the Yen N corridor, which will benefit all island residents. So what are we talking about? Well, we're talking about the Yen N main corridor from Victoria to Courtney, which is two hundred and twenty-four kilometers. The Yen N branch corridor from Parksville to Alberni, which is sixty-four kilometers. In addition to this, there's already existing rail trails that link to this corridor, the Lockside Galloping Goose, which is eighty kilometers, and the Duncan to Shawnegan Lake, which is seventy-five kilometers. So you can see here that if you were to have all these rail trails in place, we'd have over four hundred kilometers of rail trail on Vancouver Island. we'd have over four hundred kilometers of rail trail on Vancouver Island. So what is the issue? While we believe that a unique opportunity exists to turn a largely abandoned rail corridor into a thriving tourist attraction and safe local commuter corridor, the current tracks have largely fallen into disuse beyond viable economic repair. And we understand the Island Corridor Foundation has incurred debts using the corridor assets as collateral, increasing the risk of losing this precious corridor and adjacent property. So what is our vision? Well, it is to convert the rails on Vancouver Island to a non-motorized, multi-use recreational trail. Now, this would be for locals, where residents could utilize the trail for local commuting or pleasure while avoiding the hazards and congestions of the road. Cyclists could travel between local communities for shopping, work, or pleasure, and walkers and hikers could pick up the trail at any location for a peaceful outing. And we believe there's a big opportunity here for tourists. The trail could be a drawing card for national, international tourists. There's a trail with linked communities up and down Vancouver Island. And with the increased traffic at the existing train stations, it may make them commercially viable enterprises where information boards and a kiosk could be put in place. And we believe for really a more active lifestyle, and that's what we've really been talking about in this whole province, is getting people out more. So Rail to Trails will encourage healthier, more mobile lifestyles for people of all ages and abilities by making safe places away from vehicle traffic to walk and bike and more. They support a viable alternative to the automobile and encourage people to get outside, be active, and maybe even take a rail trail vacation to see the countryside from the perspective once only enjoyed by train travelers. So what is the proposed project? Well, it is to convert the Island Corridor to Rail to Trails while along with the already existing Galloping Goose Trail in Victoria would provide a continuous length of trail for use by all island residents and tourists. The cost of developing the trail could be minimized as the salvage of the steel rails could largely offset the rail and tie removal. Removal will be done with the least amount of disturbance leaving the rail bed in a condition for immediate recreational use with the possibility of a top dressing during the removal or sometime in the future. We would use sponsorship funding for local businesses, grants from government, and volunteer labor to help mitigate the cost. And we could develop additional lease agreements with local utility companies such as gas, water, and power who wish to utilize the corridor, and by doing so, reduce the future maintenance cost of the rail. And we had tried to enter into agreements with First Nations for trail segments that pass through their territory, encouraging the sharing of their cultural traditions. So what's the process? Well, the first step is acknowledgement and acceptance, and this is to obtain public support to persuade the ICF to adopt the Rails to Trails initiative. So here, we would meet with parties of interest, and that's why we're here today. And we've already met with the ICF, we've met with the First Nations, one of them anyway, and different public groups from Rotary. And we're looking at building a communication platform, and we've already done that with websites, newsletters, Facebook, and emails, and developing connections with the news media through the newspapers, radio, and television, and liaising with recreation groups, strengthening our positions, and we've done that with a large number of recreational groups so far. So what would be step two? If we could get acceptance that we could do some of this area anyway, if not for the whole railway, we would then get into the planning and preparation. And we don't see ourselves as replacing the ICF. We see ourselves as assisting it with their new mandate. And so we would work with them and the regional district staff and provide advice and support to develop funding sources. We believe there's opportunities here in government grants, donations, and in businesses. There's also to develop labor sources, like contractors and volunteers, trail development planning. We feel, again, we would have a closer touch with the users and be able to suggest the type of trail design, surface material, and so forth. And we believe we may be able to help in resolving some of the right-of-way issues with the First Nations. And step three would be after the planning, we'd go into the building and maintenance, and here we see our role as being an overseer and providing feedback on how the contracts are going, monitor the work progress, the timelines, and then into the maintenance program. And we think there's room here, again, for volunteer groups formed into something like the old railway way was with section crews that could help out in different sections of the trail by helping to reduce the cost of the maintenance. Connectivity. Now, this is an area we're quite concerned about, is the current Rails with Trails program. Without the ability to utilize the existing trestles and bridges, small sections of the trail are being fragmented. These short sections of trails are often being built at very high costs, parallel to the track, and may never be used in the future. And the example here on the right is the Coombs to Parksville Trail that's just recently complete. A really beautiful trail, lots of people out there using it, and they're really happy with it. But again, we can see a perfectly good rail bed on the side, and this trail cost close to three million dollars. I believe it was two point six. And this, again, was built on some of the easiest ground beside the rail. We talked to the recreational people, and they said that portions of the trail other than this would be very difficult to put a trail alongside it. So are you interested? Now is the time for us to move on this initiative. First Nation communities are feeling frustrated with the lack of action being taken on the corridor. Regional districts have started initiatives to provide costly alternative right-of-ways parallel to the ENN track when the most obvious one is being overlooked. Walkers, cyclists, and tourists in community neighborhoods are losing a valuable resource. We need to take action soon. Now is better than later. The ICF current management plan to construct a safe and effective rail service is not working. We can put more time and money into this rail initiative that isn't working and delay facing the reality of the situation. Or we can act now and work towards making our organization an effective tool towards transforming the corridor. So are you interested in allowing us to help keep this corridor alive? If so, please provide your support to us. And we'd just like to thank you for allowing us to make this presentation today. We hope that we have impressed you with our ideas, energy, and determination to keep this ENN corridor alive in a viable way. Thank you.
Thirteen seconds to spare. Have any, council, any questions for the delegation? Councillor Russell.
Comments? Thank you very much for coming here, and I wish you were in an open meeting. And perhaps that might be the case in the future. Certainly had my support to the previous delegation. I'm sure that this might be one of those cases where if we had a bylaw for the yeses and the nos, that this would be one of those fairness applications. They provide both parties, which whoever the both parties will end up being, funding to support their positions. But indeed, I don't know that there's anything in your presentation that I don't agree with. And I can't imagine there being anything. If you've been on the Galloping Goose Trail from one end to the other, if you certainly rode that passenger crane, I remember being on it at Pearwood Elementary School. That was a long time ago. But I couldn't imagine being able to go on it on a bike at a riding weekend or riding week. And the skater reminds me of the West Coast Trail, right down the middle of Vancouver Island. So I think it's a perfect opportunity.
Councillor Holm, follow away, councillor.
Thank you. Yeah, I fully support this. You know, one of the examples that you listed off was really cheap. The Coombs Trail was less than three million dollars. But Cédric and I would actually consider doing a trail right downtown to Fifth Street.
And then a little farther.
And a little bit further. And that was at a cost of eight million dollars for a couple of kilometers, if I'm not mistaken. Because each time we had to cross a railway track with the trail, it was a million dollars or so. Yeah, so I fully support this. It may be great to utilize the tracks because our residents are using the tracks now anyway. Thank you.
Councillor.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation again. We heard that a couple weeks ago out of the RDN. I'm totally supportive of those initiatives as well, as I was a few weeks ago. But if you're meeting the ICF, are they giving, I'm not, you don't have to ask this, no, but if we're getting, if the message is... Okay, I will ask, was, when you said you met the ICF, are they behind okay at this plan? I doubt it, in my view, but...
Actually, when we first met with Graham Bruce and his assistant, Janice, they just said, if this is what you want to do, go ahead, fill your boots, show us that there's a support for this. Right now, they're in the process of doing a strategic plan, a business plan. Unfortunately, they didn't have enough people before the end of their deadline for submissions for that strategic plan. I think they had, they were hoping for four hundred responses, and they were quite a bit short of that. So they extended it by two weeks. So we let the people that have been signing our petition know that that business plan is out there. So that will hopefully get them up to the four hundred that they were planning on. So basically, at this point, I think the ICF is still really thinking of a rail. We look at, we walk that track every day, we see what's going on. We just, we look at, for example, I'm down in Lady Smith. Shimana Station, there's moss growing all over it, the roof is becoming dilapidated. So there's a lot of deferred maintenance that unfortunately, just get us volunteers out there. We'll get some TSP and we'll get it all fixed up in no time. I mean, we have a huge volume of volunteers that are willing and able to work with us, but they want to know what they should do. So I think we have a wonderful resource here within our community and on our island. This is really an opportunity for us to work together and really get something accomplished.
Thank you. So just in closing, I think it'd be great, great for citizens, great for tourists, it'd be a great thing down the road, and I just think somehow how this council goes that it's, that ICF has to get over a way and let the people do what they want to do with the corridor. Thank you.
So could we just ask for a motion to the effect that you would be supportive of a change from Parksville to Courtney as a starter for a rail to a trail? Could we just ask for that motion?
You can certainly ask for it.
Okay.
Thank you. That was okay.
Thank you very much. That's the whole idea with the Island Corridor Foundation, not the Island Train Foundation. And I appreciate it. I see in the future that the other tracks will be gone, and I look at non-drive, for human driver cars running up an island corridor as Google Earth cars or those type of things, without drivers, picking people up, dropping them off, transportation corridor for small deliveries, all that. So I think it's a, and it is, and the thing is for me, that train does not cover all of Vancouver. They've always said, oh, it serves as a bank around, it only services a little portion of the east coast of Vancouver. And Vancouver's going, so I like the concept. We did support it at the RDN for your motion to go from Parksville North and from the novice section. For me, it's the same. I personally, first of all, thank you again, I don't think the train's going to be viable anymore. That's a thing for me. Thank you for the work you're doing, the efforts you're making.
I've got a couple of questions for you. You may know I was a former director of the ICF and co-chair. You use the term, you understand that the ICF has incurred debts and used assets as collateral, putting the corridor at risk. What assets are you referring to?
Well, actually, they took out debt with the Commerce Bank of a million dollars. They have repaid some of that. I believe that the current, as of the last financial statements that we were able to get hold of, it was nine hundred and fifty thousand that they still are owing. I believe that the restaurant there has had some deferred revenues. In other words, they've been leasing the restaurant in the train station, but they haven't been able to keep up with the contractual increase in rents. And then there also is about a hundred and forty-five thousand that's owing to the South Vancouver Island Rail. And we're not quite sure why that is, because of course, South Vancouver Island Rail is using the ICF assets. So I'm not quite sure how that came to be. And then there's about two hundred thousand in deferred revenues. Now, this is as of the end of two thousand and fifteen. As of the end of two thousand and sixteen, the auditors have, and I don't know that I should be saying, but the auditors have actually qualified their opinion. So I don't think that's a good thing. I think it's good that this is a committee of the whole, because I don't think that's a good thing to put out to the public. This is a public meeting. The, oh, this is a public meeting. A qualified opinion means that, especially with regard to a going concern, is that there is some question as to whether it can continue on as going concerning.
As a railway, based on the original business plan?
As a going concerning.
Right, so that, just so you know, the million dollars was against the Nanoo Train Station. And it has a lease, it has tenants in it, and they've not defaulted on anything?
They haven't been able to make the rate increases, though my understanding as of the two thousand and fifteen financial statements. But the, I guess that the concern would be that in particular, the Commerce Bank and the SBI both have a blanket charge, first, the Commerce Bank a first charge, SBI the second charge against all of the assets of the railway. So that includes the track and the properties.
No, it's not against all. We can discuss it as a sidebar. You also said, suggested that you could get involved in utility leases to earn revenue.
Right, that was my comment. I realize they already have, are already doing some of that, so we're just looking at it adding to that as a possibility. When the, when the Galloping Goose was reworked, portions of that, new water lines were put down from Suk, from the Suk River and places like that, and they redid the trail for them at that time, resurfaced it. So we believe that's an opportunity that we can look at. It's not saying we could get it, but we're looking at that opportunity.
There are currently thirty-five hundred different leases involved in the ICF.
Okay.
Thirty-five hundred. And you said, you also talked about the lack of the ability to keep, to move ahead with respect to the upgrading of the tracks. Were you aware that both the federal government and the province had approved both of those? And had it not been for the Nanoo's claim, that they would have received the money?
Right. No, we're not aware of that totally, but the thing is that we don't believe that amount of money would put the tracks back in the shape that you could start running a railway on it again. We believe the figures are quite low. So that's an opinion. I lived next to the tracks for a number of years, and I was up in front of the cameras seven years ago when the railway went down, and we're still here. And so it's only deteriorated seven years more since then.
It's unfortunate that the Attorney General, with respect to that claim, were not, were not willing to support the ICF, even though they were one of the defendants.
The whole case is an interesting one, and I'd love to talk to you about it, but I don't think this is the place. But the quotes that were passed around back in two thousand and eleven was a hundred and five million to get the track up and running. And we feel they were going to do it over a five-year period. And we feel that that might meet what would be happening. But we have to look too at people. I mean, I rode that railway every week, twice, going down to Victoria and back, because I wanted to keep that rail alive. Believe me, if there was any way that I believed that we could keep that rail alive, I would be fighting for it. But I was sometimes one of five or six people. At the very end, when they were talking about shutting it down, the ridership increased a bit. But I even got all of our neighbors to go, and they said, Sherry, thanks a lot, that was a lot of fun. It was great doing it once. That was a lot of fun. It was great doing it once, but we'd never do it again. It's too slow, too expensive and too unreliable because it was always running late. And it was, and you had to, at all those uncontrolled crossings, there's a hundred and four rail crossings. And at every one of them, they'd blow in their whistle and everybody was getting headed. So I don't, I don't think, I think it's a viable corridor and it's a viable transportation corridor, just not in the form that was back a hundred years ago.
So, uh, just, just as a, as a final, and that was the, uh, you're right, a hundred and five million or a hundred million dollars would take it to, uh, you know, pretty pristine operable condition, no doubt about it. It may surprise you to know that the federal government said yes, we'd support that. It was the provincial government that wouldn't. Yet, the new Democratic Party have made it very clear that they will support investment in rail in Vancouver. Thank you. Uh, motion to receive the delegation. Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Bestwick. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry suggested a motion.
No, nope, we've got it. Thank you. They're to counsel. So, um, call of questionals in favor. Receiving the delegations. Thank you. Motion passes. So is there anything, any business arising? Counselor Bestwick?
Well, I must agree forward a notice of motion. For the next council meeting as it relates to our rails to rails to Vancouver. And work with the motion staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a sidebar, the transit bus from Langford to Victoria's Bay. And they were hoping for having community traffic on that with the bus and wifi and everything. It did last a few months, so tough one.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bestwick. Okay, so the next delegation is Mr. Fred Brooks regarding the benefits of purchasing the Green Thumb Nursery Lands for the eventual development of the passive leisure park for the citizens of Nanaimo.
The reason for the handout is just so that you've got a map of the site in front of you that is because it's convenient for country demonstration. I think you can all hear me and I do appreciate that, uh, I have an audience still remaining at that. Thank you for being here. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council and the other staff that may be present. I wanted to be able to make the presentation of this idea to you at this time because it's rather a timely element that we should be looking at towards, uh, reviewing the opportunity of acquiring this very major forty-four acre site of the, the Green Thumb, uh, Green Thumb Nursery Lands. So as I'm suggesting here, this is a one-man show, this is all my ideas, there's no other input. So if there's any credit or blame, let's keep it in the room, we'll see how that works. Proposal to the city of Nanaimo for the purchase of the Green Thumb Nursery Lands for the creation of a separate passive leisure park for the citizens of Nanaimo. This is the kind of area that can spur something new and different outside of sports fields, outside of, uh, other, other type of activity spaces that everyone is using, such as a waterfront, et cetera. This kind of a passive leisure park is, is not a new concept. In fact, it was the, the concept that started, uh, Central Park in New York. And also we have, uh, this in Beacon Hill Park in, uh, in Victoria, very lovely, pastorally kind of a space to go and enjoy. And also, also sort of, sort of like, uh, Van Dusen Gardens in Vancouver. So this gives Nanaimo the opportunity to create a park space which is both very nice for the citizens. It's also very touristy, so it brings people into the, into our, into our manufactured, own, you know, design nature. If you see the letter, the offering you the opportunity to, uh, look at acquiring this forty-four acre site. I know I'm up against competition. I just heard it tonight with the fire department and all the other people that are after the money or our money. And that if there's an opportunity in this to at least examine this for the prospect of developing this as a land bank for future use, don't let this forty-four acre, you know, majestic, beautiful site slip through our fingers by not getting it, you know, in our hands to be able to create with. The elements of the park, which you'll see on the site plan, these are, uh, these are the key ingredients. Now, this is just a concept. This is not to say this is the way it should be designed or what could. I'm just saying this is what could be designed. And what we can incorporate into this park as, as features that will attract everyone across the spectrum without it being a sports field or being a nature park or some other kind of space. So we have the Central Park Promenade Mall, if you're referring to your site. That is the spine of the, of the park site. That's the promenade where you can go and walk up and down and visit and chit chat and greet neighbors. The shelter is at the north end of the site. That's an architectural glass roof pavilion with, backed by a twenty-foot high living green wall around the back of that, which is a very important element. So that helps you focus your view down the, down the mall to the other end of the pier, which is a promenade which goes into the, uh, a projection, goes into Duck Pond, Koi Pond. So that you've got that yin yang space of architecture at one end, you've got nature at the other. And you enjoy the stroll back and forth. Also around that, as you enter into this from the parking area, this is the reflection pond. This is a very classic kind of a European type of a, uh, pond, uh, water feature with a central sculpture of some sort. And then also, uh, you know, sort of, uh, water, dancing waves, dancing water fountain, et cetera, that can be operated as well. Also in there, there's a year-round, year-round restaurant, which will be the opportunity for bringing in some commercial use of this, having the building built even by a, a private builder and operating a restaurant in the site. The family picnic area, there's the play area, perhaps a miniature children's discovery train ride, sort of like the one in Stanley Park. All of these things can bring in the people, bring in the families and bring in the youth. One of the features of this is the sun bowl, which is at the northern end, but there's a, there's a nice natural slope of the property that comes down to that. And, uh, that's a great sun trap for just having lawn areas for leisure use and, and read a book and, and, uh, just enjoy that space. The duck pond is the, I mentioned at the end of the pier with Refuge Islands and Johnny Boy in there. The outlook is backing onto the area where it boundaries on, boundaries onto Highway nineteen eight, which, uh, which is a noise factor, which can, you know, bring sound into there. We want to try and manage that. So that does an elevated soundproof back wall. The colonnade is an architectural feature in there. There's also areas there for First Nation, that First Nation that it displays. Want to acknowledge that the park development was developed with the ideas of Frederick Law instead of Calvert-Bow. I see him a half-time bill. The gardens in the park, we're gonna get into some colorful pitch, colorful pictures here. For the gardens in the park, the Asian garden can be the Japanese or Chinese with a roof walk-through post and be a pavilion type of an element. Uh, that can be done with sponsorship of different cult, of either the, of different cultural groups. The English garden representing a quaint old English village atmosphere. That's off on the right side down by the end of Mariner Way. Replica street front, small shop selling ice, uh, teas, baked ice cream, park souvenirs. And the coffee shop running the winter bus with a nice fireplace and maybe. Now, this is the ideal place for Crow and Gate, kind of a, a nice restaurant in there just to bring that in as a, another attraction that we, we all like to be down to the Crow and Gate. We can have our own up here in the north end. Formal French garden, just to demonstrate intricacies of French parterre. The informal gardens are the heart of the park. This is really the essence of this park, which is, uh, on either side of the promenade. And I just want to go into one point here. Oh, by the way, there's a potential garden too, which could be run by Vancouver Island University with their interest in, in botanical works. Uh, the definition of a passive park, lead, passive leisure park. It's a park setting specifically designed solely for relaxing amid peaceful, uh, placid peaceful surroundings and socially stimulating atmosphere. No noise or artificial distractions, purposely stress-relieving and visually inspiring to soak in its refined sensual nature and return to guests again simply for the joy of, of being in that space. So here we have the park site. There are Uplands Drive down here, there's the, um, side street comes in off of there, Park, uh, Parkwood. The retail section of the site is up at the north end. These are the two existing greenhouses. They can be retained and they're good for, you know, growing stuff. There's the fine, the spine of the park, the central promenade. The, uh, the pavilion, the pond, the botanical garden, the restaurant, the English village, et cetera, up there. Uh, and parking for a hundred and sixty cars down here and additional parking up there. So these are the elements that can be incorporated into this. They all stimulate our imagination as how we can use these spaces and how we can create, uh, attractions that we don't really have in our city at the moment. English garden vignettes which replicate the idea of old English gardens when you look at, uh, so maybe, uh, old English movies like Poirot and, and, uh, and some of these people, they're, they're just great, they're great spaces to, to enjoy. Oh, just go back there one. That's from, uh, the mall in Central Park. Now, what's proposed is that we would have the long corridor mall and that, that a double row of canopy trees, probably London Plains or something like that. You're walking down this long corridor like a tunnel. It'd be beautiful in the summertime under the leafy shade of those places. Fuchsia trees that we could eventually get, uh, we enjoy were the gift from the past. We have an opportunity to develop a park that is for, for the, the life, the lifetime of, of the city. And the older it gets, the bigger the trees get and the more, uh, more graceful, the more, uh, extender the park becomes. There's English examples that we can be bringing into this, uh, the colonnade, for example, um, uh, from English gardens. This is from Edmonton, believe it or not, but they've got beautiful installations of trees and parks. And there's a park right inside of that space, which is, you don't even know you're in the city of that mall. Here's a homemade hanging garden. This would be replica of the, say, the twenty-five high green wall around the back of the pavilion as a, because there's a natural bank that goes up there behind the greenhouses. And the classic, uh, French parterre type of a demonstration garden there. These are just, these are actually in labor, and which is quite interesting that they take the opportunity of every little boulevard space that they can find to put in red pillar and yellow lumps and it's just a great show in the summertime. And it, it really brings life to the city and, and life to the experience of driving through these areas. So it's a really great spot. These are good ideas even just to, for us to think about doing right now. Park circulation, uh, there's the, the small dash lines that we saw in that park site, the, the two, the core of that. There's also other opportunities for walking and jogging. There's a service road that goes entirely around the site for the workers on the weekends and holidays. That can be a great jogging trail as well.
Please wrap it up, sir.
Okay. Let's run through, I just want to rebalance our park amenities. We have great parks and spaces down in the south end, the waterfront, the Bay of Sutton Park in center. Uh, we even have the, uh, you know, other parks that are down there. But we don't have anything in the north end that is really as beneficial and as, as dramatic as what we could create here. So by being prudent, resourceful, we could actually afford the acquisition price of this. The timing is perfect. It's available now. I would really respectfully suggest to council that look at how you can talk together about this. Make an offer on this or, or do the due diligence, due diligence to research this. But please do what you can to acquire the park space now, just even as the raw land that would be left over when the nursery moves out. So it's just the opportunity that, uh, there's a way to, to get the park, to get the space. The purchase price to be determined by fore and development vision. So there is some sympathy by the, by the owners, by the vendors, that if it has the right purpose, the right reason for the city to own it, uh, is probably very negotiable. That's the site itself. We know what it looks like on the ground, but we don't realize just how huge that is for forty-four acres of prime green space up in the north end. You'll never get a chance to, to acquire it again. So let's see if we can look at how this can be created and just how this can be acquired, for the green, for the purchase of this. Step in a big, a big step in the right direction, city and the north end. And Frederick Law instead notes about him, there's a gentleman there. And make no little plans, capability round, English landscape architect, forever be doing to mediocrity. So there we are, the opportunity, park for the city, a park for the future.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Donius? Counselor, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm really impressed with the time and the effort that you've put into, uh, drawing up these plans and, and really creating this vision as you see it. I'm sure you recognize there's, there's challenges and I think you pointed out there's lots of demands on how council can spend taxpayers' money. Uh, the thing that, that I'm struggling a little bit with this, not that I don't like the idea, is that it, as opposed to saving parkland, it's, it's creating a parkland. And, and when I looked at this, I thought of Bouchard Gardens, of course, but Bouchard Gardens is a private enterprise.
Commercial use, yeah.
Yeah, and so would you have a reply to that or a comment on that? As a, I guess where I'm going with this is, do I see the city getting into the business of creating this, this parkland?
It would be on the same lines, uh, like you said, Bouchard Gardens is highly successful, world-known. And, but it is a commercial enterprise. It's run by a private family and, and they have, they have a way of doing it very, very successfully. What we need to think of though, is that the things that, that Bouchard Garden attracts people to are the same things that you have the opportunity to create here. So that at some point, maybe in the game, there may be some way to justify maybe a, a park admission fee like, uh, Van Dusen Garden does, but people still love to pay and go in there. And they have the fancy restaurant which you can go in or out of. But, uh, operating it as both a civic space, operated by the city and city staff in there working on the thing. If it ever came to it, that there had to be a numbers issue, then that would have to be looked at separately. But this is one thing that I wouldn't mind paying a little more taxes each year for this to be a success. And I think you could sell us easier than, than some other things that we've been, you know, we've had in our history. And also, uh, a way to, uh, work with something that is really appealing to people that I can, I can use it. My family can use it. It's good for my city and we all, we'd all know how beneficial that would be.
Thank you. Any other questions? What's your name?
Just one question, um, Mr. Brooks, it's just, um.
Fred, if I may, okay.
Okay, Fred. Thanks. Thanks for bringing this to us. It's, when I, when I travel, I want to go to these places. This is what draws me to, to cities. This is what makes me want to stay in cities. I think it's a, just an amazing idea. I, and I'm not, uh, trying to dampen it at all, but, um, cities are, seem reluctant to invest in, in long-term things these days. So just something that we all need to remind ourselves of, but I love this.
We can do nothing longer term than, than a park and a garden and trees.
I know, I, you know, I've been to some of the, I was really annoyed to find, I was just to find that the, um, the cemetery, uh, um, can't lose the, the car marks is buried in. They're charging us to go through there now, so. From my part.
Thank you very much, sir. Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Hall. Thank you. Hall was favored. Polls, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, folks. I gave up a wedding anniversary dinner tonight for this.
You can still go up. It's not too late.
I'm glad to have seen you too, though.
Thank you. So our last delegation today is Ms. Dorothy Houghton, concerning parking. Can you just help, can you bring the microphone down, please?
What I want to talk about tonight, I don't think it's on.
You can take it right up.
All right, so, um, I want to talk about parking, but, and also transportation, which, which kind of, um, kind of marries it too. I saw recently where a committee will be, uh, studying the parking in the hospital area. I worked at the hospital. I worked at the hospital eight years ago for about two years, and I know firsthand the parking nightmare that's happening over there. I live in the downtown core, and the first bus that leaves for the hospital is at, still to this day, it used to be later, today is 6:55, where a lot of the shifts start at seven. So I have no way that, I mean, I would, it would have been marvelous to be able to take the bus to work and back again, but couldn't do it. Instead, had to run around, go early enough so that I could find a parking spot. And that same problem is, still exists today, that just blows my mind. You know, when I've heard this subject come up at council meetings before, where, you know, it's like this big head-scratcher about, should we do about that? Well, let's collaborate with the buses and see if maybe, yeah, why don't they go when people need them to go? You know, and the same example, again, is the north end malls. I hear that argument from a lot of young people who don't drive, where they don't have a vehicle. They can get to work, but then a lot of times when they're finishing their shift, they can't get home from there. So it's just, it's insane. I don't understand in 2017 that that's still happening. One other peeve of mine, and it has to do with the ferry terminal, and I've seen this so many times, I notice like when I take the ferry, come back, there's, it's wonderful that there's a bus dedicated to the ferry, but it doesn't go far enough because so many times when the ferry has left late on the other side, I'm arriving, getting out, and there goes the bus, empty. So if it's dedicated to the ferry, why isn't it synced to the ferry? Like, to the, although they're late, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me that that bus driver now just drove, stopped for a moment, but we're not all out of the terminal yet. And off it goes, it's insane. It's not, it's not very customer-friendly. So I'd really like to see more collaboration. I realize this isn't to the city thing, but it is in our, the regional district and the province. We've got to be able to move around the city more, and more people need to be able to move around, to go to work where it's less expensive to own a car, to run a car, to pay for gas, that sort of stuff. So I just hope that this conversation could be brought up at the RDN. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Donius? Counselor Brown?
That was the presentation, thank you. I think it said, things that need to be said. You might have, if you, you know, if you were willing, you might have some success if you went to the RDN and made the, made your presentation, because that is in fact where the decisions are made about routing and working with BC Transit for the money. And all of the transit committee members will be at the regional district meeting. They usually say, thanks, so.
You mean the council members that are...
Our council members plus all the other transit, see, the RDN as a subcommittee, all the transit select committee.
Right.
And so all of the people on the transit select committee will be at the full regional district meeting, and you can explain to them the issues.
Right, and some of you folks are on that, aren't they, aren't you, on the...
Regional district?
Yes.
Seven of them, but not all of us from transit.
Three.
Yes.
Is it three?
On transit. So am I hearing, am I hearing you that I would have more power than you guys?
Yes, I actually believe, I believe in terms of making, having influence, when a citizen comes to a regional board and says, here are some issues that I have in my city that I would like you to have a look at, that you're going to have some influence. I mean, of course, you know, once I have an extra, our committee members would be tackling that as well, but I think, you know, it works because there has to be more than just three votes, and that's how many votes we have on the transit committee.
Right, right. However, I'm thinking if you, three, the three people on the committee were to make that presentation on behalf of the citizens of Nanaimo...
That too would be a good idea, yes, but.
Yeah.
I recommend that you...
I don't understand why it hasn't happened yet, but, because we've talked, you've talked about parking at the hospital and the nightmare that it is, and it's just getting worse and worse and worse. Like, that's two, three years now.
I agree, we have to get people out of cars, and we can't do that unless we make buses available.
Thank you. Counselor Hall, any special for you?
Um, thank you, just wanted to clarify some information. BC Transit gives us hours, no more nor less, can only work with what we're given. We've actually tried to pay for our own bus service to Sinabar, to bus the kids to school. BC Transit said no. Taxpayers in Nanaimo said, we won't pay, I think that was the mayor's motion. And they said no. Because it is a partnership. It's not strictly paid for by the citizens in Nanaimo, it's 50-50, 49, 40 whatever the ratio is. So we can only work with the hours that are given to us. We could be pricks and take all the hours from the rest of the RDN.
Counselor.
Sorry. We could take the hours, we control the vote, we can take the entire, every hour that BC Transit gives us, put it in the city in Nanaimo, and not give anything but else to anybody else in the RDN, we could do that. But we're only giving hours from BC Transit. So we can only work within those hours. So either we can increase your service early in the morning, reduce the frequency, that's the only thing we can do, is shuffle the schedule, we just can't get any more hours. And it's a big city, you know, it's not like Victoria where it's horrible, it's eight square miles or kilometers, we have a lot of distance to travel with buses.
Right.
So the biggest problem we have is, we just don't have enough hours.
Well, and I think I was suggesting this, switching the hours, just like earlier where we were talking about the train. Who the heck wanted to go down to Victoria at two o'clock in the afternoon and then have to stay, anyway? You get my point?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not asking for more hours, just, can we not figure out that people need to get, there's a lot of people that work at the hospital, a lot of people. I don't know if you've been around there lately, but all the side streets are packed with cars.
And a lot of people that work at the hospital.
How about starting a little bit earlier? You know, that's not going to be more hours.
Thank you. Counselor Spencer?
I think you have covered, sorry, sorry. I think you have covered the right place, seven members of this table sit at the regional district table. And as you heard, three members of this table sit on the transportation advisory committee. And so I think if you have a concern as a citizen of Nanaimo, that this is where you would automatically come to first. I personally witnessed the bus as I'm waiting to see people coming off the ferry, going out, driving in empty and pulling out empty, and you sort of shake your head and you go, what? Ridden the blue bus on the other side a thousand times, and it waits for the ferries to load. So certainly I would agree that there's something that good and should be done scheduling, and that courtesy of scheduling. As for parking at the hospital and VIU and other travel hotspots, I don't think a whole lot has changed. In several years, the wall, corporations around the wall, they're going to be building a arcade near the Phil пор Plaza. Maybe that will be some of the parking, but that doesn't do anything for the concern that you expressed about getting to and from downtown to work at the hospital and hospital parking is without question a substantial matter. And, yeah, we would look at it. I guess we've known a lot of it for a long time. Thank you.
Counselor Fuller?
I think everybody knows the transit system sucks, and everybody has ideas on how to make it better. It's bigger than just the hospital, for a, just the hospital.
Absolutely.
It's like you said, Woodrow Mall and the teenagers work out there, et cetera. It wouldn't hurt to go to the RDN, and it wouldn't hurt to recruit the people that have the same ideas as you go to the RDN as well. Remining Hicks is a big promoter of the bus system in Nanaimo, so if you were to get in touch with her, and unfortunately I can't give you her phone number because I don't even know if she has a phone, but there are people out there that would support and go with you to the RDN. More of the area.
Counselor, welcome.
Yeah, just quickly, thank you for coming back this evening, for your very morning thoughts. We can lobby and do our best as well, here, here, a few of us and the seven of us, and we were, it took, I think, about a year and a bit, but we managed to change the route a little bit in the time around the time of route with the Duke Point and the Grumfeld there recently, so pushed for this as well. No guarantees, but we'll just keep plugging away and thank you for bringing to our awareness and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm happy to hear that you're, that you're willing to bring that up.
Yeah, here you are.
You know, as our employees.
Counselor Kip?
Thank you very much. Eight point three million last year, eight point five million dollars is our cost from the city requisition to the RDN for transit in our southern community. We expanded five thousand hours by a motion by George Anderson a few years ago. We had five thousand hours over a couple of years. I have what is called EBS, that's Empty Bus Syndrome, and I see them all over, empty massive buses running. Every chance I get out there, I talk about the buses, I talk about the budget, I say how bad the system is, and they're like, oh, it's a system at the level of operations, they do it, we say stuff, if we don't make a massive motion, we can't change it, so we have to make a concerted effort to make a motion. But I absolutely think the system is, it's not efficient, it's, I mean, you can take a, from Town Center Road, you can walk to the university quicker than you can get a bus downtown. So it's not a system plan for people. And you hospital employees are a problem of parking wherever you want and all over the road. So it's the college a problem, all the people that park over. And what we've done is made a cash cow out of parking. It's an absolute cash cow, I know, and so we, we start to push the students out farther, and they have a hundred dollar a month parking bill if there are fines they get at the hospital. I mean, I live right by there, it's a busy area, and you should expect that at a hospital. It's a busy place where people are coming in and out fast, and we all want to park right in front of our place, and the background health authority has nothing to do with parking. We have, they, they won't spend money, so it's an eye healthcare issue, right? So it's a, it's a problem of bureaucracies, all melding together, and politicians all melding together, and that's a problem for me. And we're, we're going up a lot over the next five years for this bus system we have, that's empty, empty bus syndrome, it's an absolute syndrome I have. And so I'll think, continue to move stuff forward over there and talk about the bus system and try and come up, we flipped it, I thought, little lunar routes, that we go from the hospital to BC Ferry, back up to, you know, to the hospital and circulate around, might make people move better. But quite honestly, I think a lot of people want a bus system so they have more room on the road to drive their car, and that's why they want everybody else to take transit. Because we're all so driven, and our town is so linear, and me as a self-employed businessman for years designing homes and buildings, I could never take the bus. I couldn't ride my bike, just ride my bike around, but can't because of the way that I was designed and built. So what we need to do is have livable spaces around where we work, so people don't have to transit. The kids who work and live in the south end don't have to go all the way to the mall to get their employment, and the people that live in the north end work at the college or the mail or somewhere in there, we're driving all over the place, and that's, it's our planning, it's been that way. It's, you know, and eventually we're going to have Vicnamons, Victoria and Nanaimo co-moms, one big strip mall, and then wait to see how the buses run, and that's where we're heading.
So the RDN, their bosses are the, well...
We have to buy our buses, we have to buy our buses.
The local government, is that, is that correct? The RDN...
No, regional transit is, transit is a provincial issue.
Yes.
And our regional boards run our transit, and they go through the regional transit system of the province, that's why we buy our buses, we have to buy those big buses because we get a deal on them. And that's, we don't have a system, it's a bureaucracy, by the way.
It's a three-way split, the riders pay a third, the RDM pays a third, and BC Transit pays a third, and the decisions are made three-fold. Well, I guess not the riders, but they do, but they do have...
The people that actually use it don't get it.
But they do have, they don't have a vote, but they do have a voice, I think, that the transit from the RDN has gone out, like parked at the university and had open houses and tried very hard to engage people who are users, and just trying to make the system work for people. I don't, I don't think, I don't think that the, that the RDN would agree that there's an enormous number of empty buses except when they're going back to the yard, but...
Well, they perhaps don't travel by bus.
No, but they monitor the buses and they know how much money comes in the thing, so they know how much they're being used. So I think that, I think that there are facts and figures that need to be checked, and there's stuff that can be done. And I think that the bus system can be improved and it can be expanded, but we have to have the will to pay some extra taxes.
I see no further questions, we're out. Thank you very much.
Well, if I had, we, I've tried to have, I don't know how many riders we have, and they say it's hard to determine, because people get on and off the bus. But I've determined we have about two million ridership, what they say, and we have over four million seats available through that time of the period, so, you know, we're maybe half the capacity of our buses, is what they tell us, but I don't think there's a very lot of them. I'm not certain they can tell me exactly what the ridership is, they estimate it by money, but it's hard to tell, they don't count every person that comes up. If someone, you know, click the thing, they don't do it, they just, and some people walk on the path, so you don't know if that person even arrived on the bus, if you just count and pay it.
So it would be in excess of the number?
Excuse me. So my point is that it's a hard system, trying to make it work for people, and it is deficient. We don't have the population, make sure, stuff is flying all the time, buses, you know, everything going, and I, we don't have, we don't have the population to keep the transit systems without tax, without putting tax on them.
But the rescheduling would do something. Would, I mean, why not give it a try, right? Just give it a try. Clearly, they don't really, that number 30 that leaves Prudhoe and wherever and goes to the hospital, takes 12 minutes, leaves at 6:55. They could care less that there's workers wanting to take the bus to get to work on time, and there's a lot of workers that can't go to their bosses and go, sorry, I'm going to be about 10 minutes late every day, I'm going to be, so, you know, it's not just about more hours to me, I don't...
Efficient.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Motion to receive the...
Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Fuller, second to my counsel, all with favor, all with motion camps. And we move on, and that is special area.
Well, contractors on RDN, talk about it, a bus has to wait for a late ferry, not leave the dock 10 minutes early or something like that, wait for the ferry if it's late? Pretty simple.
Does he stop?
And could the council adopt the policy that no reduction in parking demands within four blocks of our hospital, which I've been watching and witnessing for years, to a drug... A drugstore goes in across the street, and one parking space? You allow the reduction to one parking space? Can you go use the hospital parking lot? Do you know how many parking spaces are used by doctors and employees that do not work at the hospital? There's a fourplex down across on Seafill Crescent that you allowed a big reduction in parking because they didn't have enough for occupied fourplex place with offices. They're even renting parking spaces across the street at a apartment block. Plus, they told you, we can get a lot of parking spaces at the hospital. You're party to the problem up there. Please adopt the policy to make other people that are not working at the hospital or building developments outside of the walls to demand the parking spaces are there or you don't build. Please develop it because you're creating your own problem.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Motion for adjournment. Councilor Kip, seconded by Councilor Hall. All with favor. Motion carries.